This is the Board of County Commissioners's regular meeting on August 12, 2025 in Board Chambers, Taveris, Florida.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Recording in progress.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Lake County Board of County Commissioners meeting this August 12th, 2025. We're going to open the meeting with an invocation. And with us today is Pastor Bobby Rowe. He also is representing Fellowship of Christian Athletes for North Lake County and does a fabulous job with that group and working with our young people. So, welcome Pastor Rowe.
I'll do the pledge after the prayer.
Yes.
Let us pray. Lord, we thank you for this day. This is the day that you have made, and we choose to be glad and rejoiced in this day. We thank you for our leaders that help lead out Lake County. Lord, I pray that you will continue to give them wisdom, guide them as they make decisions concerning our county. We give you glory, honor, and praises in Jesus's name. Amen. Let us stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. All right. Moving then to our agenda update. Jennifer Barker, our county manager. Do we have any changes to our agenda?
Just one thing, Commissioner. Good morning, Commissioners. I would like to request that we move Tab Five from the consent agenda to have a vote immediately following the agenda update. This is so Commissioner Morris can vote remotely. He is currently unable to attend in person, and he should be online. Commissioner Morris, are you there?
Yes, ma'am, I'm here.
So if we could take that vote immediately following the update, I'd appreciate that.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion to allow Commissioner Morris to vote virtually today.
Thank you.
All right. All in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay. Commissioner Morris, you are now a voting member of Board of County Commissioners for today's meeting. So, we appreciate you being able to log in and join us. Okay, legislative update. Chris Carmody with Gray Robinson is going to go over our legislative update. There he is.
I see it up there. Who do I look to for the clicks?
Right over here, by the way.
Oh. Good morning, everyone. Chris Carmody with Gray Robinson. Great to be here with you all this morning. You're gonna see, I'm gonna warn you ahead of time, a bunch of slides. I'm gonna go through many quickly. These are obviously available, so a lot of this information you know, but I just wanted, don't get freaked out when you see a whole bunch of slides up there. I'm gonna move through them quickly and get to the meat of the stuff, so we can answer any questions and give you updates on everything related to y'all. So, with that, I'll start clicking through here. Okay, that's a picture of me and Angie, my partner in crime, right behind me, Angie Langley. We work together on your behalf up in Tallahassee. We've been doing so for many years now, and we're grateful to have that partnership and many years of success. Glad I didn't wear the same suit this year. Okay, so, we start with the players, right? And so, for those in the audience, and obviously those who I'm speaking to on the dais here, it always helps to know who's in the room, right, making those decisions up in Tallahassee, which helps guide us and helps us in how we guide them as far as the decisions they make, whether it's appropriations or policy. So, you see some of those subtitles there. Hundred twenty members. A few were out in the House due to resignations. And then, of course, the Senate, you had an unfortunate passing of one senator, and then a few others that switched parties or had open seats based on appointments. So, kind of always moving target there. So, this slide will be updated probably within the next hour, as many of you are aware, but I'll start with that. You have the Office of Governor. Everyone knows the person top left, that's Governor DeSantis. His lieutenant governor, it's widely expected this morning, he's gonna announce to replace Jeanette Nunez, who took the FIU job, will be Senator Jay Collins, which will create another opening. That's not official, but they are hosting that announcement at the Green Beret Association. He is a Green Beret. I'm gonna do some political calculus and make that guess there. The governor's team, you can see their chief of staff, Jason Weida, his director for policy and budget, Lita Kelly, and then Mary Claire Hubbard, who took over Legislative Affairs Director, kind of late in session. Peter Cuderman was his Legislative Affairs Director during most sessions. And of course, the cabinet. Many of these are new faces. Wilton Simpson, elected in the last cycle, and then you've got two newly-appointed members. James Othmeyer, who is the Attorney General. He was previously in the role as Chief of Staff to the governor. And Blaise Engolia, this is by a couple weeks old, now the head of DOGE in the state of Florida, and we'll talk about that later. He's previously a senator. But both those positions there were largely, not largely, they were empty. Well, no, excuse me. James was appointed earlier in this year, but the CFO office was empty since mid-March, when Jimmy Patronas was elected to Congress after he resigned that seat. So, still fairly new in those positions there. And as you can see, especially given the appointments, many close ties there to the governor, so working closely there with him. On the House, you'll see, this is the leadership group there. Danny Perez out of South Florida is the Speaker. Lawrence McClure is the Budget Chair. And then you can go through some of the familiar faces there. Sam Garrison, probably the most notable of the rest of them, given that he is the Rules Chair, but the Speaker designated. So, he'll be taking over, assuming the Republicans remain control of the House after the '26 election. So, his power will continue to rise as they go through the process next year. And then the Senate, you have Ben Albritton, Senate President. He actually announced just yesterday that he, well, he didn't make it official, but he made a lot of comments that would reflect that he's gonna forego his last two years in the Senate, based on redistricting. He had some extra years he could use. So, when he's done being Senate President next year, he's in theory going to retire from the Senate. But he's Senate President now. Ed Hooper out of Pinellas County is the Budget Chair. Kathleen Pasidomo, the immediate past president, is the Rules Chair. And then the majority leader, Jim Boyd, notably there, is he's expected to be the Senate President after Ben Albritton. And then, close to home here, Jason Broder is the President Pro Tem, and he's based out of Seminole County, but obviously works well and closely with many in your delegation here. Future leaders, I kind of hinted at some of these, so I'll put them up there. Because of term limits in the House and Senate, the folks up there have a decent idea of who's gonna be their future leaders. And in the House, they actually have a cutoff point. It's the end of June during that first year where they make the election. So, we've updated that slide as a result. Sam Garrison is who's expected to be next. Following him is Jennifer Kennedy, who's historic for a couple reasons. Surprisingly, the first presiding officer to come out of Polk County. We've had several Budget Chairs from both chambers, but never presiding officer, and probably more notably, the first female Speaker when she takes the gavel. There's been three female Senate Presidents, but never a female Speaker. And then Mike Redondo, newly minted, sort of a poorly kept secret up at the House. They're not supposed to talk about it, but he had one of what they call redshirt freshman years, where he got, he was elected in a special election and came in. So, this is sort of his second year. Most people expected he would get it, and then late June, they did. The House Republicans did gather and elect him as the Speaker of that class. In the Senate, you'll see Jim Boyd is set to take over after Ben Albritton, Jay Trumble following him. And many believe Tom Leek, although it's never been made official, Tom Leek will be the one that kind of lines up with Mike Redondo on the Senate side when he rises up, many years out. And then here's your local delegation. You all know them well. I'm sure the folks in the audience know them well, so we won't dwell there. But you have Senator Trudon, then of course, our three House members, Representatives Yarkowski, Gentry, and Cobb, Gentry and Cobb being freshman members in the House. So, unless you were living in Iraq politically, you know about some of the tensions that were leading up to session. So, we have a slide on that, and all I'll say, and you can read the slide later, is after the election and Trump taking office, the governor had called a special election, largely around immigration, but a few other topics. The House and Senate almost immediately said, "No, thank you." Those weren't their words. I'm being more polite. You can see the quotes up there. Some tough language was used in the memos when they said, "No, thanks." So, they gavelled in, and then immediately gavelled out, gavelled in their own special session, to have their own immigration bill, which the governor vetoed, and they called a final, third special session to get done an immigration package that the governor could sign off on. Not much change between the original version that the House and Senate had and the one the governor signed, a few tweaks, but it was an early signal of kind of the chaos that was to be expected this legislative session. It didn't seem like anyone was getting along up there. So, that'll kind of be a theme as we go through here. By the numbers, again, these slides are available, so you can track them later. Almost 2,000 bills filed, almost 270 passed, 246 signed, 11 vetoed, and zero awaiting presentation of the governor. They've completed their work, including on the executive side. And then three, this is the first time the governor's done this. Three bills were allowed to become law without signature. Probably the one that gained the most attention was the one regarding non-competes on workers' contracts. The governor allowed it to become law, phasing out the non-competes, but he didn't sign it. So, that's something in the Constitution allows. This is the first time Governor DeSantis has allowed a bill to become law that way. Usually, he's either approved them or vetoed them. We'll see what that does next session, if he does something similar. All right, and you can see sort of on appropriations, which guides a lot of the conversation, very similar. House filed, Senate filed, as far as the number of bills filed for appropriation asks. So, here's some of the priority issues in this guide. So, some of the things they all agreed on, and you can see in that top slide, there was a few things. Tax cuts, it's, since I've been in the process, they've always led with a tax package. They were generally agreement on cutting the budget. It's just by what much, by how much and where, and then talking about a regulatory framework and putting some efficiencies. This is our Republicans who lead the House and Senate. This is sort of the talking points you've heard for the last 10 years. So, those, they agreed upon. From there, not much was agreed upon, as you probably heard. But let's go ahead and see what they were leading with. Governor, property tax relief was his number one issue. He kind of, anytime he had a chance to speak on it in a press conference, he led with that. They ultimately didn't pass anything as far as a constitutional amendment yet. That's expected this next session. But as you've heard more about DOGE, the DOGE effort, as you've heard Blaise Engolia, CFO, talk about DOGE, you've also heard him follow-up with property tax relief is needed. That's not a coincidence. This is part of the drumbeat that's leading towards next session and next election cycle, which we can speak on. Illegal immigration, the governor led on that. He ultimately did get a bill passed in the special session, as you've probably been following with alligator Alcatraz down in South Florida. They've continued to push on that. And the other thing, sort of, he's gotten a lot of what he's wanted, this governor, over his first six years, first six sessions. And so, you know, continuing to lead and then cementing his legacy. He's got two sessions left going into this one. Now, he's only got one, that we've concluded it. So, sort of a lead of, let's continue to be the leader in the country, right? The first of the 50 states. So, that's sort of his mantra this year. Ben Albritton, very big on rural Renaissance, and this was a big expensive, I say expensive, it was, there was a lot of money in the bill, sort of like live local from previous Senate President. Ultimately, didn't make it to the finish line, but the whole goal was to put an infusion of cash in our rural areas of the state and change some regulations, in his words, to make sure that the rural areas have as just much of an opportunity as the urban areas of our state. This will absolutely be back next session. It got caught up in some of the politics late in session over the tax package. Florida citrus, he led on that. He's a farmer by background, obviously, so he's familiar with it. And he put about $97 more million in the budget than the previous year towards research and to citrus canker and greening and other areas. So, he is, he is going to have part of his legacy of at least trying to do something to keep our citrus industry alive here in Florida. And he put his money where his mouth is. And then empowering members, right? You've often heard the expression that the House is sort of a militaristic approach, the speakers, the general, and lieutenants, and then privates, whereas the Senate, you often heard, was joked, was forty Somali warlords. No one's gonna tell any senator, Republican or Democrat, what to do. That sort of had shifted in previous years, more to a leadership at the top approach. But President Albritton made it clear that his members were gonna have all the authority that they needed to have. He wasn't gonna put his thumb on the scales on things too often. And you saw a lot of that play out this session, which kind of led to the chaos. And that's not a jab, that's just more of a comment of the facts, is when forty members are not necessarily having their thumb put on the scale of how to vote, then they're gonna start acting how they want to act, which could lead to some chaotic votes. And then Speaker Perez, he wanted a sales tax reduction, not in business rent tax, which we can talk on, but the actual state sales tax. That package was debuted late in session from 6% to 5.25%. That ultimately did not make it to the finish line. He was leading with spending cuts. Obviously, the governor and the Speaker, or the President, joined him on that, and ultimately in the budget. And then, of course, targeted repeal of tort reform. If you could say Speaker Renner and President Pasidomo were tough on tort, are tough on the trial bar, right, with a lot of tort reform, I wouldn't say Speaker Perez is a pro-trial bar, but he's certainly a little more open-minded to the idea of some of the reforms in the other direction. And so, there were some bills that he had certainly supported and endorsed that was gonna peel back some of what was done under Speaker Renner and President Pasidomo. None of those made it to the finish line, but we expect next year those could come back. And one of those, and we'll talk about it later, notably is sovereign immunity, right? That is a constant thing that, on your behalf, I'm usually worried about up in session because... because we know it's not been changed for 11 years. And so the drum, it's, the clock is ticking, right? A lot of people expect that that could come back, and under this leadership structure, it could. So the budget. The one thing they have to pass every year, the other bills are, I guess, ornaments on the Christmas tree. This is the Christmas tree that they actually have to put forward. And so you can see up there, some of the things they agreed upon was cutting the budget. But where they cut, um, that wasn't necessarily agreed upon. And I, that's a joke slide, because as you know, it took them an extra 45 days to get the budget done. So it took a little while to load that. But they did make it to the finish line on day 105. We love a pie chart. So it was ultimately a $115.1 billion budget that was passed. You can see where it was going, no surprise there. In a state of our size, population-wise, healthcare funding take up a huge chunk. K-12 and higher ed education take up probably the next biggest chunk combined. And then you can add up the others, transportation, road funds, ag and natural resources, criminal justice. And then here's some of the totals, if you want to track it that way. And you can see the percentages. Again, all these slides will be available if you'd like them. Lake County, as you know, we had, we are South Lake Public Safety Complex, got a million and survived the veto pen. And some others around town, um, from PICO dollars, which is a different pot of money. And I say both easy to get into, but hard to get into, but once you're in, you can do something. But you can see Lake Tech had some workforce education funds. And then Lake Sumter College, their program fund was right around $21.8 million. So, uh, and there, that's not the only appropriations in the county, just a couple we wanted to put out there for your awareness. Budget highlights, some of the others, and then, um, you know, we can move into some of the policy and I obviously can answer any questions. You can see, uh, on the K-12, FEFP per student billing, uh, spending up almost 2%. And then pay raises for state employees. Some of the vacant state jobs, uh, so when you cut the budget, one of the easiest places to look is jobs that haven't been filled. They cut, um, the actual funding for 2,200 vacant jobs, ones that hadn't been filled. So you don't have to lay anyone off, you just, no one's going to be hired in those positions. So the people that are there probably have a little more work in the future. The work plan, which is critical for Lake County, we are at the center of the state's growth and development. So obviously, fully funding the work plan is to our benefit as a lot of the, the roads that they are funding come through here or adjacent here. So that's good news. Sadowski Trust Fund, that was fully funded again. That was certainly, uh, not the case midway through session and sort of the back and forth between the House and Senate of what they were going to do. There was some ta- talk of pulling back on some of the, the injection of cash that was there under Live Local, but ultimately, they were able to work around that. I think that's going to be a conversation again this next session, so we're keeping an eye on it. It's not that they don't believe in the, the, the funding, but if you're going to cut the budget, they were looking for places to cut, and the Sadowski Trust Fund and some of the new funding models for it were an easy place to look because it's not tens of millions, it's hundreds of millions. And then, as you can see, Everglade funding, uh, again, another strong year of funding for that. And then you can see up there, uh, 5.2% or 3.2%, excuse me. My eyes need to work, uh, a little better, and less funding than the fiscal year 24, 25. Big-ticket items, I kind of hit on some of these. Visit Florida, got 80 million. Rural and family lands protection program, which I know has benefited some property owners here in Lake County, 250 million. 750 million in the stabilization fund, we'll talk on this. Florida has a stabilization fund. Every year, they've been putting what the max is that they can put into that. And what, part of the, the way they negotiated the landing plan for the tax plan, the budget and everything else, was they put forward this bill that would be a constitutional amendment that would, um, increase the amount that you can put into the budget stabilization or that you're required to put in the budget stabilization fund. Ed Hooper, the Senate budget chair, as he was presenting this bill during the kind of extended session days, he, he, he quipped that he hopes this doesn't pass when it goes to the voters because he doesn't like tying the hands of future legislators. But part of getting the deal done, the sausage made, they had to do that. And this was part of the speaker's push of he, he thinks Florida has a spending problem and he wants to reduce the spend. And one way to do that is to require the increase in what we put in the stabilization fund. The good news is that, um, and you can, I'll go through these and I'll give you the good news that goes with it. They paid down some more state debt. And then Hometown Heroes Development, uh, Down Payment Assistance Program, they put 50 million more in there. Is that we, as far as unspent reserves, we're at 12 or 13 billion beyond our budget stabilization fund. To put that in terms that, like, kind of like quantify, that's two hurricanes and another COVID crisis. Hopefully neither of those, or none of those occur. But the state is flush with unspent cash based on revenue projections, and that's the conservative revenue projection. So they certainly did spend way less than they could have, uh, and that was by design. But the good news is going into next session and certainly going into probably our peak hurricane season in Florida these next couple of months, we have the reserves to take care of our state should something like that occur. All right, a couple more tax package. You probably heard a lot about this. The big part of that package took almost all of that $2 billion was the business rent tax elimination. They took it, um, all the way down from the two-ish pennies that it was at, down to zero. That will have an effect on local, if, if the, for any county or city that has opted in with a local business rent tax. Those go away with it. And then some of the others, the, the back-to-school sales tax that you hear about frequently. They put most of that into permanent, thinking shoes and clothes up to $75 worth. So that is something that's now permanent, and that kind of funded the rest of it. And then the others, this is, I, I heard a reporter say it, and they said it well. The tax package is always like the Christmas tree, where you put the ornaments up there, um, and see how many stay on. But that you can see some of those hunting and fishing supplies, sales tax holiday. And then the tool time, sales tax holidays, some of those are there. And then you see some of the others kind of related to our Florida tourism, admission to state parks. And then they did, they have what they have, what they call sports admission tax exemption for big events. And they added a NASCAR event, and they're the, and, uh, races at the Homestead Miami Speedway, sort of to increase demand for those. So, uh, a few others, line item vetoes, you saw about total of 1.35 billion. 750 million of that was that cha- transfer to the budget stabilization fund, as the governor pointed out. The state is more than flush in unspent cash and reserves that are already there, so he didn't feel like it was necessary. You can't take the politics out of politics. Some of that is a shot at the speaker, who, those two are not exactly getting along even today. And that, because that was his priority. But generally, when you take out that 750, it wasn't a terrible budget, uh, veto season for projects. But it was still, when you take it, it was less than what the governor actually proposed in his own budget after he put his vetoes in. So the, the theme was less is more, I guess. So tort reform, I mentioned some of those, um, died, but you can see PIP repeal, phantom damages, free kill, as it's called, um, for doctors that have a med mal. Those were all, uh, ki- either killed in committee or vetoed by the governor. I expect a lot of those will be back, so pay attention to those next year for those in the business industry. Local government legislation, I'm sure you guys have been monitoring it well, but a couple, one I'm putting on your radar. Senate Bill 180, which had, uh, which was themed to do with emergencies. There was, uh, a piece in there that was, uh, kind of worked in in the final stages that dealt with, and they'd done it before, but this one seemed to be a little more aggressive in its approach, where, um, if a hurricane made land file anywhere within 100 miles of that land, landfall up through its track, you couldn't go back and, and put rigorous or aggressive development restrictions or whatnot. It was done in previous years with more guardrails around the language of just don't do this. The, the idea that if, if your home gets taken down, you should be allowed to rebuild it and not under all these new codes or new restrictions. This one, um, was a little more aggressive, where it was retroactive in effect and basically went back to last year's hurricanes and did the whole 100-mile radius thing. But it put some restrictions on any kind of development restrictions or anything that could perceive that would make it more difficult for you to develop your property. It's gotten a lot of headlines in Orange County, neighboring over here, that had Vision 2050. It's getting headlines in other areas where some, whether it's an environmental issue or something else, if a city or county is pushing for something. It was, the people who are, uh, working against it are presented of, well, this was not what it was meant to be. I can assure you, this is exactly what it was meant to be. The people that were pushing this, and, and many have come forward bragging on what it was done, was meant to slow down any kind of development restrictions, whether here in Lake County, Orange County, Seminole, wherever in the nearby area. There is, there are some Republicans, though, uh, because it was, they're in the majority, who have expressed that, well, maybe they knew what it was meant to do. They, they weren't comfortable with how far it's been taken. So I think next year, you'll see some momentum to maybe pull that back or certainly don't extend it. But it'll go from last hurricanes up through a year through. So if there's no hurricanes this cycle, and let's knock on wood and hope that there are none just in general, in theory, some of these restrictions will go away. And there'll be an opportunity in Tallahassee next year to talk about what is appropriate and not appropriate as far as this. But that was put in there, and it was meant to, to stifle any kind of, uh, development restrictions or regulations. The other one, um, and you all had opted into DOGE, but I put it on your radar because it's certainly going to affect your neighbors, and it, and it is going to be a theme as we go through this, um, uh, the next year, is the implementing bill, which many of you are familiar with, is the bill that goes with the budget. It's good for one year where you can make changes in law. And then come June 30th, or July 1, if you will, of '26, those changes are gone from the books. One thing that was slipped in on the very last day of negotiations of the budget, and when I say last day, the night, the final meeting where they said, "We're good to go, we're done," was a lot of implementing bill language. And one of them was from that bill where it dealt with Florida DOGE. And it gave them the authority, which, you know, y'all were probably in good standing anyway, so it didn't matter. But it more radar, the authority to go in and ask for these records that they were getting through public records. But the key is, is they can now charge fines. And so when you see the headlines where DOGE was going to Orange County, they're in Orlando today, they were there yesterday. And you see our CFO kind of speaking to reporters. Part of the reason they're able to go in so easily, not just through a public records request, is this authority is now very clearly in our laws until June 30th of '26 that says they're, they have right to access all these records. And if a local government pushes back in any way, they can be up to a $1,000 day fine. So I think you're going to find all the local governments probably would have cooperated anyways. But now they're going to be extra mowed to cooperate because it'll cost them some money to do so. And I'll touch on that. This is no surprise here. The governor has been preaching property tax reduction. He and the speaker had it out during session of how you go about that. Should it be a state sales tax reduction, property tax reduction? They are going to lead into next session with a push to have amendment that's going to be on the ballot in November. What that amendment looks like is unclear yet. It could be, it could be a very far, broad, far-reaching, not just Homestead, but everything. It could be, you know, more surgical, right? Homestead, but for a certain age and so many years in our state before that. So it's not just a, you know, a, a bunch of folks that didn't live here before coming in and taking advantage. It's unclear what that's going to be, but what's going to lead the way is DOGE. Uh, if you've listened to Blaise Engolia, and I'll start to move on here as I say this. Every time he gets in front of the press, he says, "Property taxes are needed, property tax relief is needed." There's no surprise. In some ways, I'm sure the report is already written, and I'm not saying, you know, careful I say that. But they've obviously know what they think is the problem. But they are going to come up with a number, and that number is going to probably be in the billions. And they're going to say, because of that waste, we now have to have property tax relief. What that bill looks like and what that amendment is, yet to see. That'll be something the House and Senate will decide upon, that they put to the, the voters. So it's coming, uh, so we should gear up and be ready for that. I know you all are limited in what you can do at, from the dais as far as approaching that. But you certainly educate constituents on what the impacts could be. So notable, I'll go quickly through these. Notable bills that passed, constitutional amendment reform. That was, uh, you know, how you collect the signatures, whether they can be out-of-state or in-state workers and how quickly you can turn them over. It's not the, the, it's certainly not the good old days many of us experienced where when you turned 18 in high school, someone hands you, then says, "Hey, you should register to vote." That's not even allowed anymore. So, uh, it's definitely a different ballgame. Fluoride ban, um, and, and a bill led by Senator Trudon here locally, there was a big ag bill. What, one thing that was in that bill was, um, a fluoride ban. Many governments across the state were already banning fluoride, but now that's official. State parks, you probably remember last summer, there was discussion of putting golf courts, golf, a golf course or pickleballs or even hotels in some of the state parks. It had, uh, a large rebuff of both Republicans and Democrats to the governor's plan on that or his team's plan. And so they passed a law there that made it very, very clear that, that that would not happen. And if it did, it would be heavily vetted by the, the, the public, right? If you're going to do something like that. Condo law reform, this is something that, since Surfside tragedy, that the legislature and the governor's office has been each year trying to get their arms around, right? They thought they had a solution, and then it turns out that the solution, while it would certainly keep the building safe, it was going to make them extremely expensive to live in, to, for the insurance and the maintenance costs that the, that the condo owners would have to make. So they've made another attempt at it, try to get the costs in line, but keep them safe. I think this is something they'll continue to work on each year. You probably remember, they talked about, uh, previous sessions, they did school tart, start times. They were shifting them to later, uh, with the concept of kids need to be sleeping. That will help with their, their, their development. They repealed that this year, and what it ultimately does is for your school board here locally and others, is if they could go, come up with a study or, uh, with a vote that they've determined that it actually is not going to benefit them in their area, they can, they can ignore that law. So not a full repeal, it's just sort of a permission to say, "No, thank you." And we expect many will say, "No, thank you." Department of Health package, um, notable, uh, why I bring it up here is you probably remember in the, the, the tail end of COVID, the, the legislature passed some bills that, um, made it clear that businesses and others couldn't, um, couldn't restrict your entry to that facility based on your vaccination status, certainly on COVID and others. That was set to lapse, um, sort of like, oh, we'll push it out a couple of years because hopefully it's not an issue. Well, they brought it back, it just to make it clear that, that, that those provisions will stay in place. And then as well of how doctors are treated, that doctors can't discriminate, um, you as a patient, right? They can't say if you choose that you don't want vaccines, they can't keep you from going there. And then brownfields, this has been a successful program in Florida where they've been able to rehabilitate brownfields properties, but it needs funding. And they were able to put some bills in place that helps keep the funding alive and, and keep it in such way that, whether it's here in Lake County, the other 66, if you've got a brownfield, developers will be motivated to develop that property and, and take those funds to clean it up. Here's some bills that did not pass, but we expect will be back. Property insurance, um, they are, um, the legislature and leadership from OIR and others are, are, are of the belief that what they did a couple of years ago will, will start to pay dividends as we go through, um, insurance cycles. So they, they passed on doing anything this year. I think if all those renewals that we're getting are continuing to increase, I think you'll see some movement next session, uh, because there is been a drumbeat by folks across the state saying, "You got to continue to do more, that our renewals are coming in, and they're higher than they were the previous year." But they're trying to let the market take care of itself. The good news is there are more insurers coming into the market, but they haven't quite seen the rate reduction yet, um, yet. Hemp regulation, this is something that you continue to see of kind of loosening the restrictions around hemp regulation. That didn't make it there. E-Verify, um, as you know, in Florida, if you have 25 or less employees, you don't have to do E-Verify. And if you were, if you have 25 or more, the employees that you had, um, were grandfathered in before the law changes. There were some bills that got a little bit of momentum to just make it E-Verify for everybody, right? Tricky in a state like ours is we're seeing everything that goes on because it's, it's kind of a poorly kept secret that many of our industries and some of our strongest industries rely on, um, workers that are maybe not here fully legally. So it's, it's a complicated issue in Tallahassee, is everyone's trying to balance that. But I expect that bill will be back. Uh, one that got a lot of attention was college and university presidential searches and whether they should have the current system where it can be in secret, and then you announce one candidate left. My alma mater, uh, certainly went through that process where University of Florida had one candidate left and then end up not getting approved. I think because of that situation and how that went down with the Board of Governors rejecting that candidate, I think you're going to see this bill come back next year where they try to put some more transparency around it. And again, it goes to the balance of things. Some people won't put their name into the pool to be considered because they don't want to lose their current job if it's not private. But on the other hand, when it's only one candidate that comes forward, it kind of feels like maybe the process wasn't as transparent as it should have been. They're trying to figure that out. Gun law changes, there was some push to repeal some of the, um, Parkland legislation that we, that was passed, what? Five, six years ago? That law did not, that, that, that bill did not make it to the finish line, but we expect it will be back. A big one that we, we worked with and others was CRA. There was a big push to eliminate CRAs in the state of Florida. And, and not just a name, which was done kind of in previous years where they kind of limited them, but actually take them out. Ultimately, that build-in make it to the finish line, but we expect that will be back. DBPR deregulation, I promise I'm close to the finish line here, folks. There was a big, run by Representative Yarkowski here locally, there was a big dereg bill. It was probably that, you know, you hear too big to fail legislation, it's the opposite. If it gets too big, it gets weighed down. That was a big bill, it had a lot, it was very ambitious or aggressive, depending on your, your viewpoint on it. Ultimately, it was probably too much in it to keep it, get it to the finish line. But I do expect the representative and the House leadership will want to push for something like that. There was a lot in there that people love, things that probably need to go by the wayside on regulations. But there were some other parts of it that were, that gained a lot of attention, uh, from spe- different special interest groups that they had problems with it. And then sovereign immunity, I, I mentioned it, and it's probably better, best I finish with this is, it's been 11 years since Florida increased its caps on sovereign immunity. We're at 200 and 300,000, um, whether individual or, or multiple. There is a push, not just by the trial bar, but I would saw some of the Republicans and Democrats that aren't trial bar friendly, but, but recognize that, hey, there's a system in the state and, and 200, 300 is not in line with the, with what, um, current rates because of inflation and other things are. Every year, we think they get closer. What's held this bill back from passing is the, the folks that are pushing for it, and I will call that the trial bar friendlies, they want a very big increase, right? They want it to be in the 1 and 2 millions and then index it, uh, and, and kind of streamline the process, the process, which would be a, I don't, I'm preaching to the choir here, at least certainly your legal team and others that deal with this, that would be a massive hit to your, how you self-insure and the reinsurance rates and other things that you do. What has been pushed by others in the Senate and a few in the House is to just take what would be appropriate. If 11 years, you index it to what would be an adjusted, probably bring it up to 400, 500, or 500, 600, it would be painful, right? If you're jumping the caps, but at least it would be something you can manage. That's what's been preached, but because the, the side that really wants it has been going for something very aggressive, it's killed it every year, because I don't think the majority of legislators up there, even the ones that are trial bar friendly, are ready to make that big leap. But every year that goes by, I worry that this will be the year that they do it. So I will, I'll encourage you, however you make those adjustments, that next year could be the year. Certainly the leadership in place between Albritton and Perez, that they're willing to have the conversation, whereas Renner and Pasadena were not. And I, I don't know where this governor would land on that, right? Because it would be considered trial bar friendly, and he's had a pretty good reputation of being anti-trial bar, but that's usually in the vein of being pro-business. Local governments are not businesses in his eyes, so I don't know where he'd land on a bill like that. So it's something to pay attention to. We'll obviously continue to advocate on your behalf to, at least, if it's going to change, make sure it's an appropriate change and not a drastic one. All right. Session dates right around the corner. They're, they gave us a break in September because it took them 105 days to finish this year, but come October 6th, that week of, they'll be off to the races, and with a couple of back-to-backs built in there. I have three kids, so fortunately, they've given me the week off of Halloween. I'll be busy then, but the others, they'll be very busy. And then in session starts, you could see January 13th, 2026, and ends March 13th, 2026. And the other thing that I hadn't, didn't have a chance to update the slides, but I'll, I'll touch on and then answer questions, is you've heard a lot, redistricting, mid, mid decennial, I think they call it, redistricting. It was sort of the president was leading with that. The governor started to, to mention it, and in a surprise move, because they're not exactly best friends these days, the speaker released a memo saying he's going to take a fresh look at it, and kind of gave all the proper legal guidance to his members of, "Do not talk about the X, Y, and Z, because if you do, you'll be disqualified for participating in the process." I think this has some legs, so, you know, how it will impact Lake County will be interesting, right? Many people thought a few moons ago, Central Florida was going to get that extra congressional seat, it kind of moved closer to Tampa, so it could lead to a new seat in our area or not. We'll have to see where that goes, but I think it's a very real conversation, and the fact that the speaker led with it, that you have our president leading with it. There's momentum there, so I think that will take up a lot of the bandwidth in session. And it's the year, if you're going to do it in a year, it's the year to do it because we have the early session. The whole point of the early sessions before they switched it to every other year was, in, in redistricting years, you had that early session, so everyone knew what seats they were running for with enough time, right? When March finishes. So it'll be very interesting. And then final reminder on that, that unlike the House and Senate redistricting maps that don't have to go to approval of the governor, the congressional seats do have to go to the approval of the governor. So it'll be an interesting little dance there. They're already having trouble finding their notes, but now they have to, if they're going to do that, they'd have to figure out how to do that. President Albritton has not weighed in on that, so that's the big wild card in all of this. Clearly, the speaker and the governor has expressed interest, but we haven't heard from President Albritton. We'll have to see where all that lands. So I, I condensed a whole lot in some, some slides, and again, these are all available, and we left plenty off, but happy to discuss whatever, or take notes, or even look a little bit towards 2026.
That was a good presentation, it was very thorough. I think, I mean, the only thing that just keeps coming to my mind, especially when you talked about the reserves and the state being flushed with cash, is there ever any discussion about changing the way that transportation is, is funded and getting more dollars to the local governments to take care of transportation needs? Because it's just such a huge issue throughout the state of Florida, and especially here, where we're feeling the impacts of growth from all over the state as people travel through our county.
It's a, it's a, it's a fair question and a fair suggestion. As you recall, it wasn't 10 years ago that folks were coming to Tallahassee having to say, "Don't raid the Transportation Trust Fund," right? There was folks who, the legis, some of the legislators previously, you know, viewed that, because it's funded largely through trusts and some federal dollars, they can't touch the federal, but some of the other trusts, gas tax and other things, they can sort of, for lack of better terms, raid and use to fund other parts of the budget. But then they heard from local communities and business leaders, quite frankly, right? Because it was affecting everybody, "Do not raid that trust fund." So now, it's been almost 10 years, they haven't touched that thing. And, and when we had all that extra COVID money from the feds and others, they put money on top of it, right? The Moving Florida Forward Program, that was a couple of years in a row of that, where the governor was, was taking federal dollars that came to us through COVID and repurposing them to move some of the I-4 projects and some of the others that affect our region. So instead of taking five to seven years, they'd get done in a year, which is pretty crazy and ambitious, but it worked. That said, we saw something similar with Sadowski, right? That's a more recent, where they were raiding the Sadowski Trust Fund to help balance other areas or fund pet projects and communities like yours. And businesses and others said, "You've got to stop raiding that thing, like, it's already expensive to live in this state, it's getting more expensive. Why would you, even if it's not a massive amount, it's only about 200, 300 million dollars, and in the state of Florida, that's, that's miniscule when it comes to our budget." But they were saying, "Just let that do its thing between, you know, affordable housing developers and local communities that want to have, like, rent, rent stabilized, not stabilized, but rent-supported communities." And so they eventually got the message and say, "Okay, we're going to stop raiding that." We are flushed with cash now, like you, you noted, right? It's partly because of our growth, partly because of inflation, things cost more, so our sales tax is developing, is generating more. But there's no question, no doubt, we have that money. And I think it's fresh, and you heard a little bit of it this session, of putting more money in there, into general revenue to support the transportation fund. But it, but I will say, it will take not just our community, but many to say the same thing. We would obviously be a very primary beneficiary of it. I look at Vice Chairman, who serves with our expressway authorities, well aware of just all the, the traffic that's coming in the future over the next 10 years, the traffic that's here, and the need to, to support our roads, right? Because our commercial trucking industry comes through our community daily, hourly, by the minute. So there's a lot of reasons to do that. I think it's a fresh conversation to lead with our local delegation and then lead it up in Tallahassee to say, "Hey, not for nothing, but do we really need 12 billion in reserves? Maybe set aside a billion and have, you know, even though they don't get along with the governor, set up some fund where the governor can have, can kind of direct the DOT secretary to spend some of this, like Moving Florida Forward." It certainly would, I, you're preaching to the choir to me, because I see it, I live in Orange County, we could use it all over our community, but we're going to need some folks to kind of, that drum.
Right. And it seems like maybe the conversation should start with how we designate the roads, how we, how we fund out of the Department of Transportation, each district, we have these major projects in Lake County that are technically state roads. State Road 44B in the Mount Door Eustis area. But it, they all go into that one pot of money that then we get. If those roads were pulled out and treated differently, then we would be in a better position to be able to take care of the roads that are really, truly local roads. So maybe that's a good place to start, and our folks that are so involved in fact, maybe they could help us in getting other counties involved. But it just seems like something's got to give, and these projects aren't moving forward. And it's great if they're doing the big ones, you know, the, the Turnpike and, and all of that I-4, but we're not getting these other state roads taken care of. And so any, any, you know, advice and counsel you can give us on that along the way to help move that conversation forward?
I think as we're, and we, obviously, we have a delegation meeting coming up here soon, but as we're working with our local delegation, I think it's worth asking them to carry some of that torch, but we also have a great District Secretary. He obviously works within the, the budget that he has, but, you know, expressing to him that, "Hey, not for nothing, but remind your folks up there that there could be another way to do this," or at least for a couple of years while we're flushed with cash, right? Because the one thing in Tallahassee that they, they were attempting to do with this budget exercise, right? Because the one thing that I didn't mention is the, the push to cut the budget was not based in any kind of need or necessity based on the numbers, right? If you look at the, you know, the, the chart, you know, ours is going way up as far as surplus in the state of Florida, and the revenue projections each year continue to go up in each month. So they, you know, they didn't have this data to say, "Oh, well, look, we, we had a little wobble in our revenue, we got to drop it." The collections are fine, so, but they were worried of a coming storm, right? Either expenses going up, right? Because inflation has not quite got itself in check, there's the tariff issues, right? And no, no one seems to know exactly how the tariffs are going to fully impact our economy, right? Because right now, it's, a lot of folks have been cutting costs to kind of keep prices stabilized, but they expect a storm is coming. So there was partly that, but we're still flushed with cash. So if we're going into next session, things continue to look like status quo, right? And we can, and we have our revenue projections up and above like it's been going, it's a very fair conversation to say, "Hey, for these years, let's spend it this way." Because what I was about to get to is, they didn't want to have any recurring spending, right? And the beauty of transportation, right, now, well, you got to maintain the roads, but the actual projects themselves are, are non-recurring expenditures, right? Sometimes it takes a couple of years, but they're not every single year to build the road, it's built, and then you maintain it. So it'd be a very fair conversation to say, "Take 500 million, a billion, dedicate it towards whether it's state roads or roads that fit a certain, you know, categorization, right? You know, checkmarks, whether it's commercial, residential, what have you." I think that's a very fair conversation, and be a great way to spend the money where they're not doing recurring, that puts impact on future budgets. If anything, they're saving money, because the more we can make the flow of commerce in our residents easier, it'll probably increase the state's revenue long-term.
Yeah. I think a quick question, but thank you, great presentation. Thank you, Angie. Appreciate the hard work you're doing for us.
Absolutely.
Along those lines, is there anything, do you think it's possible, just a little more specific here when it comes to transportation, the discussion around dock stamps and not increasing dock stamps is the key, key phrase here, but then allowing us locally to, to maybe use a little more of that for the road projects, some, some very specific things, maybe some strings attached that would assure those of the state that it's not going to go somewhere else. But is there, is that discussion crazy, or is it just, is it possible this year?
Sorry, I mean, to cut you off. It's not crazy. Part of what was going on with Sadowski and the Affordable Housing Trust Fund was that there was discussion when they were cutting of taking some of the dock stamp revenue that, to, to offset some of the cuts, taking some of that that was already going towards the affordable housing, and instead shifted to the road fund, and then they could cut in other areas. A lot of that got scuttled, but it opened up the idea of maybe, maybe we can rework how we do this. So I think that's a fair conversation that probably needs to start with Chairman Duggan in the House, who's the Ways and Means, or at least I think he'll be, right? The House took all their committee assignments off, so we, we don't know exactly who's going to be who next year, but I think he'll stay in his position. And then, of course, in the Senate, Hooper and their team would be a good place to start. But I think it's a fair conversation, say, "If you're going to look at this, maybe we can look at it in a different way, and put all the right guardrails in there, right? So that they have some peace of mind that the money's not going to be misspent." But I think that's a fair conversation to have.
Well, again, thank you, appreciate it, and we'll hopefully be seeing a lot of you starting in October.
You will. And, and look, the invitation is always there, Jennifer and, and many of you join us in Tallahassee. You're never bugging Angie or I, so come every week, or come in the weeks that work for your schedule, we'll make it productive for you. Obviously, depending on the week and depending on what's going on, you know, it, it can, it can be more chaotic than, or not. Last session, we had a lot of chaotic weeks, but we'll make it very productive for your time, not just with our local delegation, but with the leadership there. And I, and I kind of hinted at it, but I'll say it again, when you see your local delegation members, thank them when you see them, because they, they work hard on a lot of our issues up there. You know, when Jennifer or Melanie or other members of your leadership team come to us on this issue or that, you know, kind of because it came up here, or because they, we, we see an amendment to the bill is going to impact the county, the first people I go see is our delegation members, to brief them and say, "You need to know, this is what could have impact, we need you to step up, I'm going to go make the rounds." And to their credit, they all step up, they say, "How can we go help?" Right? Because they want to deliver for y'all as well. So when you see them, thank them, but we're honored to be a part of your team, thank you for continuing that partnership, and we're looking forward to successful 2026.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, moving along, everyone, two minutes approval, Mr. Cooney.
Good morning, everybody. I have three sets of minutes for your approval.
Move for approval. Say.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Got it. Five oh. Moving then to citizen question and comment period, we're now entering the public comment portion of the meeting, and the public can discuss items that are on today's agenda, with the exception of zoning items. Anyone who has joined the meeting through Zoom using their phone may press star nine to virtually raise their hands, and anyone participating through Zoom online, please click the raise hand button to let us know that you wish to speak. Everyone will have three minutes to speak, after three minutes, an alarm will sound letting you know that your time is up. We're going to call first on the cards that we have for those in chambers today. So let's see, let me go through. Those are all 22, this is open. All right, Gwen Johns regarding Fruitland Park funding, if you'll come to the podium.
Do you want me to stick now or wait until tab 19?
I think it's for the infrastructure sales tax.
Oh, this is on infrastructure sales tax. All right. Yes, let's wait. Thank you for pointing that out. Okay, we've got Donald J. Peterson, this is about marijuana.
Hello, everybody. This is Donald J. Peterson, I'm a governor's candidate for Florida. I want marijuana legalized, and I'm going to legalize day one, okay? We should be selling it now. You're not selling it, where's all that money going? Who's selling the marijuana in Lake County? That's what I want to know, and I know who's selling it, law enforcement. It's called reverse drug stings. And you know what's amazing? They're trafficking marijuana to children, okay? That's Jeffrey Epstein-type stuff that you should look into. I'm calling a, a, an independent grand jury for Lake County to see where is this marijuana money? Okay? Now, here's the thing, Tom Homan is the Acting ICE Director. Act 15% is my plan that God gave me. Alcohol, cannabis, and tobacco needs a 15% state tax, okay? And you need to start selling the cannabis. Now, you're not funding SNAP and Medicaid. Young mothers aren't getting formula, the babies aren't getting formula, seniors aren't getting extra food that they needed. Now, what you have to do is give everybody who was getting SNAP $4,800 a year, which is $400 a month. That would encourage people to put back extra food, because we're going to war with China. The federal government has no more money. There's no more entitlement or benefits or, or funding for the federal government, none. It's all going to war. So what we have to do is, we have to do state programs, and my program, if I'm appointed ACT Director, Pam Bondi says I'll have full discretion to actually find states and counties that refuse to sell the cannabis, and I have discretion to put them in jail, okay? Just like ICE. And why? President Trump's idea with marijuana now, he wants to help his image, and I do too, I want to help his image. He needs to legalize marijuana now. But what he's doing it with Terry Cole, this is my directive on this, to deschedule altogether, okay? We don't need a Schedule III because cannabis buds are fruit, okay? A budding cannabis plant is a fruit tree. There's no reason for law enforcement saying, "We're going to go ahead and dishonor the veterans." You have to sell the cannabis now. Now, you tax it 15%, and you'll get about a billion dollars a year in taxation for, just for Lake County, for alcohol, cannabis, and tobacco, but you have to tax it, and first you have to sell. to tax it. And first, you have to sell. I've called all the dispensaries. They're happy with it. 15% state tax, card or no card, 21 years old, wonderful. The medical marijuana thing, throw that right out the window. Every dispensary will be required to have an RN or a doctor to do in-house scripts for medical, and medical's just the medical counter in-house. But what you have to do is you have to sell the cannabis immediately, and the dispensaries want to do it. Three ounces a day is what recreational states do. You have to do that. Sell that marijuana and tax it now, please. Okay? And use that money for SNAP and Medicaid. Okay? And feed your people. Okay?
All right, Farmer Banks-Helfrich.
Farmer Banks-Helfrich, Clay Road District, South Lake County. Farm tip of the day, actually, I'll give you the one I gave last week. Did you know that peanuts are lagoons related to the bean family? They also grow in Florida, and they grow underground. Chairwoman, commissioners, distinguished guests, I'll begin with a question. What gets you up in the morning? At an early age, many of us wake up because of adventure or play. I know for me, it was cartoons. Later in life, we get up for education, to learn, to learn how to get along with others, to go to school. Later on in life, we get up to go to a job, to support a family. Later in life, even farther, where I am right now, we get up to service others. And there are seven ups to service. The first one, which is the most difficult one, is to wake up sometimes, to dress up, to show up, which is the second most difficult up for others. Then there is to listen up, to speak up, and to follow up with others. And then ultimately, there is never, ever give up on others. These are the seven ups for service. I am Farmer Banks-Helfrich. May you all be blessed. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you very much. All right, do we have anyone online? We don't this morning. Okay, then we're going to move into clerk of courts consent agenda. Mr. Cooney.
Morning again. I have five items on my consent agenda for your approval.
Move to approve. Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Commissioner Morris, did you say aye?
Yes, ma'am. Aye.
Thank you. All right, that's five oh. Moving then to Board of County Commissioners Consent Agenda, tabs three through 18. We've already taken on five.
Make a motion to approve.
Take it.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes five to oh. Then we're moving in to our presentations. We're going to begin with tab 19. And Allison Teslia, Director of Management and Budget, will be presenting. Commissioner Parks, if you'll take your second item.
Okay.
Okay, perfect. Good morning, commissioners. For the record, Allison Teslia, Director for the Office of Management and Budget. Today, I'm here to present the proposed five-year project plan for the infrastructure sales tax. Here's a little outline of all the topics we'll be covering today. We'll talk about revenue projections. We'll talk about the different categories, the funding requests, and some of the next steps. Okay, first a little background. The extension of the infrastructure sales tax was approved by voters in November of 2015. The term was from 2018 until 2032, and it's distributed evenly amongst the county school board and all of the municipalities within the county. All right, the referendum included public safety, quality of life, public works, and other public infrastructure categories. All right, here is the five-year revenue projections. We're using a conservative three and a quarter average increase year over year. Fiscal year 2026 includes about 1.5 million in carryforward from fiscal year 2025, which represents reserves and unanticipated interest that was earned during the year. Okay, here's a list of the major projects that are currently in progress that will be carried forward from fiscal year 2025 to 2026, and the FDOT grant match for the upcoming projects we have scheduled. Okay, here's a summary of the five-year plan by category. In fiscal year 2026, we have 2.6, 26.1 million, which includes that 1.5 million carryforward. In 2027, we're projecting about 25.4 million. 2028 is about 27 million. 2029 is 27.8 million, and then 2030 is approximately 27.9 million for a five-year projection of 134 million. All right, let's get into the five-year plan for public safety. In 2026, it includes 2 million in funding for the sheriff's vehicles and equipment, 1.7 million for a public safety support tower and equipment projects, 1.6 million for fire and EMS station renovations. It includes 1.2 million for fire apparatus, vehicles, and equipment, 1.1 million for medical transport vehicles and equipment. The total for 2026 is about 7.6 million, and the five-year total is about 36.6 million. All right, the five-year plan for quality of life. Some of the major projects for 2026 includes 1.9 million for South Lake Regional Park, 1.5 million for Golden Triangle Regional Park, 1.2 million for East Lake Sports and Community Complex, and about 500,000 for the fairground and event center relocation. There are several projects listed under quality of life, so I'm not going to talk about every single one. So the, the 2026 total for quality of life projects is about $6.6 million, and the five-year total is about $45 million. And then the five-year plan for public works in 2026 includes about 4.1 million in FDOT grant match. There's 2 million allocated for road resurfacing and improvements. And then we also have funding for intersection improvements, public works equipment, solid waste equipment, and sidewalks. In 2026, the total funding allocation is about 8.4 million for a total five-year projects of 35.8 million. All right, the five-year plan for other public infrastructure includes 930,000 for capital building, construction, and renovations. That total was a million dollars, but we pulled out the tax collector's HVAC replacements separately to show them on the plan. We also have 150,000 for fleet equipment and 50,000 for IT enhancements. The total funding allocation for 2026 is 1.2 million, and the five-year total is about 6.25 million. And then next, we have the five-year plan for debt service, which covers the debt service payments for the road resurfacing, animal shelter, and public safety radios. As you'll see, the debt for the public safety radios expires in fiscal year 2029, so there's no totals there. In 2026, the total funding is about 2.3 million, and the five-year total is about 10.6 million. All right, so the next steps, on August 26, we'll be having the public hearing for the fiscal year 2026 Infrastructure Sales Tax Project Plan, and then we'll be holding our public hearings for the budget in September. So I will turn it over to the board for any discussion.
Okay, all right. And this is the card that I have Gwen Johns, the speaker card for. So before we go there, anyone have questions? Okay. All right, so Gwen, if you want to come forward at this time. Either one.
I've been sent on behalf of our city manager, who is unable to attend today due to a scheduling conflict. So I have a script. The city of Fruitland Park would like to thank Lake County for your continued support with the Northwest Lake Park. You've given us money over the past several years to build two soccer fields, restroom facilities, build sidewalks, purchase shade structures, and install those. The city has also put in funding for the installation of the shade structures and the engineering for that project as well. We'll be installing all the landscaping throughout the soccer complex this coming fiscal year, and we're currently finishing up the dog park. It should be completed by mid-September, and we're looking forward to continuing our relationship with you for grant funding to make this a park that everyone can enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Hey Gwen, just real quick, though, I have a question because when I was up there for a Keep Lake Beautiful event, there was some talk about maybe the baseball fields being changed, some of the baseball fields being changed into pickleball courts or something along those lines. Is there any, have you heard any discussion about that?
No, I have not heard that. But what I have heard is that they're going to refurbish the baseball and T-ball fields.
Okay, great. I know there's a big demand on the pickleball court side of things.
We hear about it.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chairman, I have a question, or two questions.
All right.
Could you, could you go back to the slide where you had the public, I think it's like the second or third slide?
Public Works, did you say?
I'm sorry.
Which one? Public Works?
It was Public, it was the one that had the Public Works and the, and the sheriff and all that.
Of public safety.
Probably slide six, maybe.
Um.
Right there. So back up one. So Public Works this year has 8.4 million, and then, or, and then next year has 6.7 million. What is Public Works doing now that is causing the extra 1.5 million?
I believe it was based on the grant match that they needed.
Okay.
For FDOT.
Can we find out for sure, please?
I'm looking at the plan and, actually, let me go.
You don't have to find out right now on the spot, but you can just email us.
If, if you look here, the very first one, the FDOT grant match is about $4 million, and going forward, it's.
I got you.
Two and a half, and that's why there's more there.
That makes perfect sense. Now, now, this is going to be a really a curve ball, and it's really not in your area, more IT. Last year, we, we agreed to have a new IT system put in place. The IP phones are not, still not working, at least in my office. So I guess this is for Jennifer or Eric or somebody that, I just wanted an update on the IP phones, how much we spent, what the contract was for, and if there's any payback for the, for non-use of the IP phones.
Okay, so we can get that information together. I don't have it right here.
Yeah, I'm sure you don't. Yeah, that's a curve ball. Just a thought. So, thank you.
We can get that for you.
And that's all. Thank you.
All right. Okay, any, any other questions, discussion? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Now we're moving on to tab 20. Kathleen Dial is going to present or at least introduce our speaker.
Yes, I'll introduce. For the record, Kathleen Dial, Executive Director of Development Services. In February of this year, the board engaged Kim Lee Horn as your consultant for the 2050 Comprehensive Plan Update. And as part of that agreement, in the scope of work, we asked for a robust community outreach and public outreach communication plan that included an online survey on the county website, an interactive GIS mapping activity that residents can engage with, as well as a series of community workshops. So today, Kim Lee Horn will present the findings from the community survey and the community workshops that took place in July. In the future, we'll consider how to use the information shared today in developing the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan. But today, they'll share and analyze the results that are hot off the presses for you. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kelly Klepper, Vice President with Kim Lee Horn.
Good morning, commissioners, Madam Chair, Ms. Parker. As always, it's a pleasure to be here. For the record, Kelly Klepper with Kim Lee Horn and leading our team's efforts on the review and the update of the county's comprehensive plan. As Kathleen said, and hopefully everybody's had a chance to take a look at and/or review the public outreach summary that was provided. What we wanted to do as part of that was to kind of emphasize exactly what we heard, how we did it, and more importantly, that this is phase one. As Kathleen said, this, you know, our, our task was to have a very robust public outreach component at the, at the very beginning, and as we get closer to the end, to one, start to listen to the citizens of this community. As you can see from the, the information that was compiled and provided to you, you have a very engaged and active community. And we wanted to walk through, like I said, some of the key overtones and findings from this initial outreach survey. Some of it, as you'll see, is, is going to be fairly, well, that's what we expected, but we heard it with such intensity and passion that it's definitely something that we were appreciative of, especially when we started reading the comments. One, because we had a significant number of comments and responses, both online as well as in person, and we'll go through some of the specifics on that, but also the time that the residents spent to provide us those comments. There was a lot of very heartfelt comments. There was a lot of very detailed comments. It wasn't save the lakes. Residents gave us specific components and ideas, and that's one of the things that Kathleen and I were talking about. When we start saying how to best utilize some of this information, it's not at so high level to where we can't understand what they're talking about, but more importantly, they provided that level of detail. So again, this was phase one, and wanted to make sure to have this up. This, this online survey that we utilized was a web-based, so it's one of those, as we talked about early on, if you could use Google Maps, you could utilize this survey. It was very easy to use, user-friendly. It didn't take a lot of time to complete. And as a matter of fact, you know, working with one of our firm-wide gentleman Joe Kafari, who does this all over the country with us, this was actually the second highest online response rate that we had, especially for a community of this size, and more importantly, for duration of this timeframe. The survey was out there for about 45 days. We had over 1,500 responses. Doesn't sound like a lot, but when you start thinking about especially Commissioner Parks, community outreach events for comprehensive plans or codes or special events, you know, usually it's 100 to 200 responses, or maybe if we get lucky, we have 500. Or, you know, you start to see some of that. So we had 1,500 responses. The, the other astounding fact is, most of the time, we're seeing about 60 to 65% of those that start the survey completed. This case, we had 88%. So once people got in, they finished the survey. That is a huge number, to say the least. The other thing is, those 88%, everyone answered every question. They didn't skip and go to the next. Comments were received for each of those, the bullets that we identified, and it wasn't just like you do some of the surveys, like when you get the Delta Airlines app, it's like, how was our flight? 555. Okay, just go to the next thing. There was comments attached to each of those components. So what were the overarching themes that we heard throughout the survey itself? Lake County's natural beauty. Again, one of those things of especially when we have a community that's over 33%, that's lakes and wetlands and, and the swamps and those natural preserved areas. We would, you know, understand and hope to see this as one of the top overarching themes. Preservation kind of ties back into that. So, you know, as we were hearing some of the comments as far, as far as managed growth, it was manage the growth and look at the preservation. How can we further enhance and increase that 33% to, to further kind of go back to what you have right behind you, which is real Florida, real close, and kind of emulating that, that brand. Of course, the survey would be complete without better roads and maintenance, protecting water quality and affordability. Those are things that we continue to see across the state. And this is at all levels. You know, everything from Hardy County talks about housing affordability. They have challenges with their roadway system and then some of their open spaces. So we go from places that are less than 10,000 to a community this size, and it's a lot of the same types of themes that we see from the respondents. You know, water quality is a big issue, protecting that drinking water that we have because that's, you know, one of those resources that we need to make sure we're protecting. So as we start to kind of balance that preservation of the community and those assets with the water quality, and then also looking at the growth that's going on in the county, both from a transportation plus housing plus a jobs and economic component, you start to see, okay, where, where, where are we seeing some of these trends? Where's the geographic center of a lot of these items? And again, as we started to kind of see some of those themes and results, a lot of it focused in on the growth and development. Of course, a lot of it was kind of centered on some of the cities and those municipal areas, which you don't have control over. But we had residents from the cities participating in this. Why? Because this was open to all residents of Lake County. The, the county line, unlike, say, Virginia, doesn't stop at the cities. It's blended across, and there's a number of activities and things that people see as it's all of Lake County or all of the community, especially when we start looking at parks and roads and things like that. When we looked at the demographics, the majority of the respondents have lived here at least 10 years. So we, you know, we've got a lot of people that have made roots and investments in this community. We had some that were over 20 years. That's, that's a huge component because a lot of times we see that it's the newer residents, less than 10, that are providing those comments, and those because they're the ones that came from someplace else or seeing something that they liked and want to preserve that. Again, majority of folks are homeowners. The residents of this community, they own a home. So again, there's that investment level. This one, you know, of course, we start looking at how, how, what was the general age demographic of those that provided that information? 45, not unheard of, especially in this community. But the, the good thing is, when we looked at some of the data, it was across all age groups. Just so happens that most were above that age, but we had young families. We had those under 20. We had a number of people that, I'll say, those first-time homeowners and first-time families providing comments as well. So at the end of the day, you know, we did have the interactive maps. We had a number of comments that people provided, not only the buttons to, as far as the maps were concerned. And when you looked at those maps, of course, we had four drop-and-drack types of icons that dealt with housing and transportation and our open spaces, and then also the employment and retail and those, those components of that growth and development aspect. We wanted to keep it simple, four kind of core topics, kind of covers a lot of different things. And you can see just from this snapshot where people were able to drag that information to on the map. Key themes that came out of some of those items, of course, there was concerns about the dense development. The residents that expressed concerns like the rural development. They like the single-family homes on the larger estate lots. Of course, there's always a give and take when we look at that of what happens then to sprawl versus some of the other things. So some of the balancing acts, and making sure that as we went through these themes, we looked at a couple of things. And everything that we looked at with these four topics also had some component about environmental preservation and those impacts. Flooding was a key concern. Stormwater was a key concern. Protection of our native habitats across housing and transportation, and then, of course, all the other topics. There was always some of the. of course, all the other topics. There was always some of, some level of comment attached to that and tied to the specific item. Transportation, we heard that discussion earlier, Madam Chair, as far as how do we tie some of the funding to some of these roads or break out certain roads and some of the improvements. You know, people are very concerned about what's going on on State Route 44 and 441 and some of the other roads, and how do we better manage the traffic and some of those things that go along with that. Access and mobility, you know, like we talked about in some of our in-person meetings within the community, when we asked the question, who drove here? Who rode the bus? Who rode a bike? Who walked? You know, mobility is a big thing, especially for the residents. And that's one of the things that we applaud the county on, because they took the initiative previously to do the transit plan, to start looking at some of those mobility options as a separate, specific type of approach and things that can be fairly easily implemented and updated through a county-wide approach. Conservation areas, recreation, and open space, this is another one that we saw a lot of discussion as far as the preservation of the natural areas and incorporation of those areas into the park system. People like that mix of active and passive. So you start to look at, how do we better balance some of those items? The wildlife protection, again, kind of coming out. And then you can even see on that last bullet, the opposition to overdevelopment. The last bullet, or button that we had, the icon, the employment centers, retail, and office, kind of where do we want and where do we envision seeing those jobs-producing types of items? So when we'd started looking at that, a lot of people were kind of keying in on the cities. They were looking at redevelopment versus the greenfield development. We had several comments on Wellness Way and emulating those types of endeavors. And then also making sure that we're aligning our infrastructure at the same time. Of course, that takes a lot of components, including a coordination with the cities. So then we moved to the in-person, and I know a lot of you took the time to come out and visit with us on those. Again, fairly robust outreach effort on this one. And this is one of those things where we have a champion, like we did in the county, that was broadcasting it. They were putting it on their, on the social media pages. They were talking to different people. A lot of that is, was very much evident, instead of just having the standard notice and who shows up, the people said, we saw this on Facebook. By the way, your Facebook page, I really enjoy. I follow it. It's very informative. I follow a lot. You probably put out more information than a lot of communities. So kudos to whoever manages that. Plus, it's actually pretty funny sometimes with some of that.
Funny? You call that funny, huh?
They have a good time with the information. It's not dry. Let's put it that way.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. Funny is in, okay, we'll leave it at that. So we had the town hall meetings. We had three across the county. We started off with Umatilla, then we went to Leesburg and Claremont. Altogether, we had about 103 people between the two. We did have a storm coming in one night, so we did cut one a little close on that to make sure people could get out and not be out in the bad weather. But regardless, you know, we had a number of activities to where people could, instead of just listening to open-mic night with somebody up there talking continuously, it was brief presentation, introduction by Kathleen, kind of an overview of what we're doing and why, and then allowing people to do what they do best, provide us comments. And we did a lot of listening. We did a lot of listening in the form of the activity stations that we had, whether it was the one word. Seems pretty straightforward, pretty simple. We do have to make sure we do ground rules for those of you who are there. I did explain that we had a previous example where somebody said, okay, Kelly, I'm going to give you one word, but I'm just going to use 12 sheets to give you my sentence. So we didn't have any of that this time. We didn't have people starting to kind of break apart the stickers and start voting in quarters or halves. So, and again, a lot of the interaction we had, we had a lot of people coming up asking questions. I had a great series of engagement with two physicians that were new to the community. One was actually born and raised down in South Florida, another from Central Florida. They attended medical school up north, came back home, as they called it. So they were there to say, what can we as doctors and physicians and the hospital do to be part of this process? That was huge, in my opinion, because they were like, you know, we want to stay engaged. We're new to the community. We enjoy it. We've got a vested interest being with the hospital here. So again, kind of working through the various stations so people could feel free to provide us the comments. They could talk to staff. And at the end of the day, like I said, you can see the various dots. We did have some that were just outside of the county boundaries. But, and I'm not going to go through each of these items, but the biggest thing to think of, especially when we start looking at some of the rankings, the most important things to people and what was most, I'll say, important on their minds, land use, transportation, parks, and recreation. And when you started kind of to dive in, those kind of go back and tie to the online survey results. Where are we building houses? What are we doing from transportation in the roads? And more importantly, how are we blending in our parks and consolidating parks with the cities or those active and passive features? I love when we do the word clouds. We took all the one words, and we put it in together. The bigger the word, the more times that it showed up. So we said, you know, what one word describes Lake County today? We didn't edit this to make it look pretty. Why? Because it's not our job to say, you were wrong, citizens. This is what they felt. They said, right now, it's congested. It's crowded. It's uncontrolled. But then you start to see some of the other ones with small and beautiful, friendly, and a number of those other things. So we did have several positives, but you could see that that was kind of that sentiment. And we start looking at the why, the whats and the whys behind some of that. And some of that is just because of, I'll say, a lack of understanding and lack of knowledge that the county has certain roles and responsibilities, as does the cities, as does the state. And a lot of times, there's that blending that people don't understand. Oh, well, that's actually happening in this city. That's not something that this board has control over, but they see it as all one community. So we also ask another series of questions. We didn't go, we didn't, for today's presentation, go through all four of those, but we also just also ask, what does Lake County need more of? What's the biggest word that you see there? Conservation. One of the next biggest ones? Parks. And then it's followed by infrastructure and housing and walkability. So again, people were very committed and engaged with, what do we want to see? What do we want to retain as Lake County? So again, hopefully, you've had a chance to take a look through the summary report that we prepared. At this point, Madam Chair, Commissioners, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have with the Phase One survey and next phases as well.
All right. Any questions? Commissioner Parks?
Yeah, Kelly, appreciate your whole team doing great work on these meetings, and it's a very important process for us to change our comp plan. I guess it was my question more about the next step. So will it be, what are the next steps? There'll be another round. One maybe specific question, you mentioned it, you had responses in all age groups. My one concern, though, is, are we getting enough from, I'll just characterize here, but like Gen Z, you know, your 21-year-olds through 30, whatever, 35, whatever it is? It seems like we're still pretty low on that, getting enough data from them. And just anecdotally, what I hear is, a lot of them feel like they don't, not even going to go to the meetings because they're just not going to be heard. I know that's not necessarily an excuse, but it is what it is. So what is, is there any plans coming up in the next steps to try to maybe focus on that, but have more meetings? And then what are our next steps, I guess?
So, great question, Commissioner Parks. So, round two, what we are going through and doing, I'll say, that evaluation of the comp plan. We're starting to develop some of those policies, so we're synthesizing this. So we will be going back out to the community, and it's actually, I believe, at the tail end of, as soon as I said that. I think I may have lost a page here. Hold on one second. Oh. Might help if I actually put that slide up. So you can see on here what we're going to be doing over the, about the next six or so months is kind of compiling, refining the comprehensive plan, creating that series of edits. Then we're going to be going out to the community, very much like we did here with the community outreach, the online, and to say, did we get it right? Did we hear you? Also, Joe, who's our public outreach guru, as I like to call him, we are talking, actually later this week, about to get to some of those individuals, the Gen Z. We're never going to get the, I'll say, get them to come in and go, well, this is what we think, but you're not probably going to listen to me anyway. So there's alternative ways. We need to get a little bit more creative. So Joe and his team are looking at that so that we can propose that as part of our next outreach efforts.
No, I appreciate that, because really, that's who we're almost writing the plan for. They'll be entering the workforce, choosing to live here or not. I know we're writing it for people that are here too now, but for that next generation. So I appreciate the extra effort in that area.
You know, one of the other things, and I briefly mentioned this with staff, and I need to follow up a little bit more with Kathleen on this one. One of the ways that we've been able to get more of the parents and more of the youth involved is, and we've done this, and it's been a huge success, have an art competition across the schools. Have them design the divider pages for each of the topics. Get them involved at that level. Have a presentation here at the board chambers recognizing, you know, the 10, 11, 12 individuals from across the county. So that's going to take a little coordination on our part with Kathleen, and more importantly, with the school district. The great thing is, I'll say, you have a great relationship with the school district. So that truly helps.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. Hold on, we have a couple of questions. So, Commissioner Smith?
So I had that as two of my bullet points. First of all, thank you for all the time and effort you put in. I know you've met with each of us, and you've done a lot of community outreach. Some of my bullet points was, since this is a 2050 plan, have we, and you've kind of touched on it just a minute ago, gone to the seniors of the high schools and the college, the college-age students here to see if they're interested? We need to go to them. They're not going to come to us. So we need to go to them, to where they are, to see if we can't get them the survey, to have them fill out where they are, either in the high school or in the college, to see their thought process. Because, as Commissioner Parks says, we are, this is actually going to be for their future, growing up, and then their kids, and then hopefully, some of them will become of our community leaders and continue this effort going forward. But I would suggest reaching out to the school board to see if we can even go to the high schools, present a survey, either to 11th and 12th graders, or just to 12th graders, and then to the LSCC or LSSC president to see if we can't get some surveys out to all their college students there.
Great comment.
Other than that, it's a fantastic presentation.
Yeah, and I will say, Katie McGruder, who can't be here today, is watching, so I know she's taken notes equally as much.
Commissioner Sabatini?
Isn't there, this is a question, but also sort of a discussion point. Obviously, I think the comprehensive plan that controls the bad growth that's coming in is key, although currently, it looks like we're not going to be able to do that because of Senate Bill 180. And I don't want this to happen, but I almost feel like the wisest thing to do is really pump the brakes on this and just pause, not because of what I want, but because of the actual political and legal reality, which is that Senate Bill 180 ceases everything, and there's been no firm commitments from anybody in the legislature that they're going to amend it. They're saying maybe, but they're probably not. And then the Department of State just essentially attacked Orange County's new comp plan, which wasn't even that aggressive. I mean, it was just common sense, really, in my opinion. And administratively, they said, this is Nolan Boyd. We're going to, you know, we're fighting against that. So you have this two-faced front. I don't want to slow down this process, but I almost feel like we really should, because it's just a waste of time and money if we know that the well-crafted, very community-driven document we end up with is non-implementable. We have Thousand Friends of Florida and other people here that could speak to it, and I'm not trying to draw a huge discussion, because I think, obviously, we could do that at a different agenda, but...
We're going to be doing it later in our agenda, about Senate Bill 180, so.
So, it's unfortunate. I'm not saying like, it's a good thing. I'm not applauding it, but that's where we're at right now. And I just almost want the board to consider maybe pausing this whole, this whole project just for a little bit, because I just feel like we're going to end up with a product that can't be implemented.
So the adoption portion is pretty far down the line, though. So it would seem like, I understand making the point in order to draw attention to the detrimental impacts of Senate Bill 180, but because the adoption process is so far down the line, why not use this time in order to work on getting this just right? And so when we get to the point of adoption, then we'll know what's happened with the bill. Has it been fixed? Have there been provisions made for things like comprehensive planning that were required by state law to do within certain timeframes? So that would be one point. And the other point is that, and I think I led with this when we started this whole conversation about our comp plan, and it goes to the slide, the one-word slide, and the big word congested and overcrowded and all of that. This comp plan, as much as we like to think that it is setting the bar for the whole county, it's only addressing the unincorporated areas of Lake County. We don't have jurisdiction over the cities and municipalities here in Lake County. So it's kind of a sort of comprehensive plan for Lake County, but it's only for unincorporated Lake County. And I just feel like we've got to, we've got to be able to make that point and message that, so people understand that we do have high hopes. We would love it if we actually got all the cities on board, and our comp plan was all one big plan, and the JPAs allowed us to do that, and everybody got on the same page and worked together, so that we did, in fact, have one plan that covered both municipal areas and unincorporated areas. And ultimately, that's my aspiration, is that we could actually get to that place. And I applaud Commissioner Parks for working so hard on the JPA effort. And, you know, we got to keep at it. But that was one of the reasons why, you know, we started talking about the charter concept, too, delineating where the boundaries of the cities should end and where the rural areas should stay rural. So I'm just going to keep banging the drum on that, because I think if we can't delineate rural staying rural and where this location should be, then it's going to be very hard for this to have the full effect that we want it to have into 2050.
Yeah, and I'm hoping, I'm hoping that this exercise, because it's not only, it's not only the unincorporated residents that have responded to this, it's also incorporated residents that have responded. And I'm hoping that by having this response, we can give it to the municipality leadership to say, look, this is a concern. We've asked you multiple times. We've even taken it to the state to try to help the state, help us with this issue. I don't think Senate Bill 180 is, because we have a comprehensive plan currently in Lake County that is pretty solid. The problem is, the cities come in and override that comprehensive plan. So I think if we get this information to the cities, as well as to the public, Lake County's, this county commission is doing everything they can to keep our rural area rural. We just need more education. I hope, it's my hope, that by having a survey, that we can send it out to the city leadership, and they can see what we're seeing.
Yeah, I love the idea of maybe presenting the results to the cities, and maybe Kathleen could help us with that. I know that we have certain parameters of our contract with Kim Lee Horn, so we don't want to go outside those parameters, but using this data so that, you know, we're actually giving this information to the cities to take in mind as they're doing their own comprehensive plan amendments, or they're considering which annexations to approve and so forth. So it's a really good, good point.
Yeah, just my take on, you know, your concern, which I think is very valid, understandable concern about Senate Bill 180. Had some discussions with our local delegation specifically about this concern and LDRs and things that we're in the middle of doing, and talking, and have been talking about doing, by the way, for several years. And, you know, their assurances were that, no, 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 this is not meant to get in the way of that. Those are assurances, I think, you know, to the, along the lines of something that we've been working on. We have an existing comprehensive plan. I would say, you know, you could be right, that it may turn around, and it may be a problem for us, but I do think we need to keep moving forward with the process, at the very least, and let it fall in their lap. If that's, if that ends up being what happens, then every citizen that's listening in this room can go and say, why weren't we able to pass a, pass a comprehensive plan in some of these LDRs that we've been working on for years, and let them answer those questions. But the discussions I've had with them so far, where it wouldn't get in the way, we don't know. But let's, let's at least move forward. And just one other question, too. Have you, is there any more thought or contemplation of like an urban growth boundary as maybe some recommendation that you have down the road, where, I know the cities have to, to your point, to at least see and understand? your point, to at least see and understand it, but what's your thoughts on that?
I'm a huge proponent of urban growth boundaries, if they're done in the right, in the right way. But that's one of those things that we are currently working through with staff to, you know, what makes the most sense.
Yeah, okay.
Because it's easy enough to take a big magic marker on a map and just start drawing without having the analysis there. We're actually wrapping up all of our data and analysis components to further inform by the end of this month. So we'll have some more information to be able to go, this is where it makes sense, this is where it doesn't.
Okay, thank you. Look forward to the-
It is interesting, too, that, you know, from the survey results, people express their concern about flooding issues. And, you know, we're in the middle of hurricane season and we had so many problems last season. And that's one of those areas that we apparently cannot address under Senate Bill 180. And you would think, it's during the hurricanes where we find out what we need to be doing better in order to protect people, their safety, their property, you know? And here, that is one key area that that bill clearly ties our hands on, but-
And if I could just say, I also support continuing for now. I just think that, you know, it had to be brought up at one point in a discussion. So, you know, hopefully we have good news in a year from now, they tailor it, and Commissioner Parks is right, they modified it in a way that allows for some common sense restrictions on combating bad sprawl, but, you know, if it doesn't happen, we have to revisit it. And then I think also, I think I said Department of State responded, I meant to say Department of Commerce, who reviews the comp plan, so, thank you. And I do like the idea of maybe possibly trying to do a future amendment to the contract. That way we could use the comp plan as an instructional document for cities, really in many ways to try to guide cities. Because my belief is that the reason why the cities sprawl, 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 without any concept is simply they don't really understand, and they're not being told the law surrounding it, the policies surrounding annexations, et cetera. And I can tell you, as a former city commissioner, there's several here, your city attorney, your city manager, your city staff, generally is not, they're not spending a lot of time instructing the city commissioners, like, hey, here's how everything fits together between counties, cities, this, that, and your toolset and everything else. And so they just go with rapid annexation and just high density. And I do think that, you know, using the comp plan, if we end up with some document like a comp plan, even whether we adopt it ultimately or not, can be definitely used with the cities as a rubric, you know, or instructional tool in some sense.
All right, great, great discussion. Thank you for the presentation. So we have a tab. Tab 21 is a library services agenda item, and then we're going to move into the landscape ordinance and wellness way. So those of you who are here for the landscape ordinance were about there. So we've got one agenda item before we start the landscape ordinance discussion.
Good morning, Chair. Commissioners, for the record, I'm George Taylor, the Director of the Office of Library Services. And we're here for the 20, make sure it's on there, okay? Is it for the right one? All right. This is the 2025 Impact Fee Grant Applications Public Hearing. Thank you. All right. So our outline will look at the background, the application process, our funding requests, the recommended funding, the public hearing, and the requested action. And a little bit of background, library impact fees are used for growth-related capital improvements. They are collected in all municipalities and unincorporated areas, but Eustis and Mount Dora do collect and retain their own impact fees. It is collected on residential construction. Single-family detached of 800 square feet or less, it's $208. 801-plus square feet is $239. Mobile homes are $190. And multifamily is either 183 for a dwelling unit or 239 for an active adult community. And our application process, all library impact fees are awarded based on county policy LCC 63, which does identify the application and review process, including these all being vetted by the county attorney's office for legality, a March 1st annual application deadline, the public hearing requirement, which is today. And for eligibility, all the county and municipal libraries that are part of the Lake County library system are able to apply. For our 2025 impact fee funding, we have $2.1 million unaudited as of May 1st of this year, available for the impact fee awards. Six applications were submitted for library impact fees for a total of $1,147,779 in combined application requests. And we'll move on to the applications. The first one is Fruitland Park. They're seeking funding for Architectural Design Services to expand its public library by 2,920 square feet to meet the needs of a rapidly growing population. The expansion will focus on the heavily-used Children's Department and Palm Villa Room, both of which are at capacity due to increased demand. And since the library's 2019 construction, population growth, including new subdivisions and a new school, has significantly outpaced projection. And this request supports the planning phase of an infrastructure expansion directly tied to their new residential development. The second one is the Howie in the Hills Library Expansion. They're requesting design and engineering funds for a major expansion of the Marion Beck Memorial Library. The town's population is expected to more than quadruple due to approved developments, and the project will provide more space for youth programs, quiet reading areas, technology access, and flexible use, and will add about 3,000 square feet. The next one is from the City of Taverries, and the library is seeking funding to expand its specialized Florida collection by about 384 titles. The project builds on their 2022 library expansion that created a dedicated space for Florida materials. They've had a strong patron interest and a 51% rise in new library cards since the addition. This targeted collection enhances cultural and educational engagement, and the new titles will serve the countywide library system and reflect Taverry's role as a central resource for Florida history, literature, and identity. The Umatilla Library is seeking $4,000 for their patron-driven acquisition collection. And this will allow when patrons request something that we don't have, they can purchase the item. They're looking specifically at audio, CD, books-on-CD audiobooks requested by their senior residents in those in rural hours, excuse me, rural areas without internet, reliable internet. And they've had over 145 new homes built in 2024 and more growth anticipated. The collection will benefit not only local users, but also help alleviate hold times for books-on-CD system-wide. The next application is a system-wide application for a read-along book collection. And this system-wide initiative will purchase about 820 WonderBook/VOX read-along books and 21 USB chargers to charge them. The books have a built-in audio narration, a little MP3 player, so it plays along, you can listen to it on headphones, it goes page by page, they're absolutely fantastic. These help support early literacy through a multi-century reading experience. And circulation of existing titles is high and demand is increasing, especially among young children and English language learners. Last fiscal year, we have 900 of these titles in the system, and just last fiscal year alone, there were over 10,000 checkouts of these items, which is about 11 checkouts per book. They move like crazy and parents and children love them. And then the final request is for $764,500 for a system-wide digital database purchase. And this is a three-year proposal with about $250,000 being spent over the next three years per year. This will be 21 digital databases that address critical gaps in education, legal, financial, and technical information. And with only five databases currently available to residents, we lag behind similar-sized counties in their offerings. The expansion would support all 16 libraries and provide equitable access to high-demand resources like test prep, legal forums, business tools, and it responds directly to our population growth and helps shifts the, excuse me, helps shifts the library into a modern capacity building digital infrastructure. And one of the databases we're really excited is Chilton's Auto Repair. This is every single auto repair manual created by the Chiltons Company, and those are usually gigantic books. So we'll have those access to every county resident. So our requested action, as you can see on the screen, is approval of the following Lake County funding levels. Lake County Read-along Books at $49,279 for all Commissioned districts. The Lake County Library System databases at $764,500, all Commissioned districts. Approval of the following municipality funding levels. Fruitland Park Library Expansion at $120,000, Commission District 5. Howie in the Hills Library Expansion at $200,000, Commission District 3. Taverry's Library Florida Book Collection at $10,000, Commission District 3. And the Umatilla Library Material Collection at $4,000 for Commission District 4. Approval of all the inter-local agreements with the municipalities, and the fiscal impact is $1,147,779. And that's the one, Commissioner, I'll turn it over to the public hearing.
All right, this is a public hearing, and at this point, I don't have speaker cards in the room. Do we have anyone online? All right, we'll bring it back to the board.
That's, Chairwoman, this is Commissioner Morris. It's my, I'm the liaison for that committee. Could I make the motion to approve? This has been vetted fairly well by our committee.
Second.
Okay, all right, appreciate that. And seeing that we don't have any public comment, we've got a motion from the liaison and a second from Commissioner Parks, so all in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed?
Aye.
Great, excellent, great presentation. I know you guys worked hard to get us to this point and appreciate all of our member libraries and everyone that's involved in the system.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on then to tab 22. Kathleen?
Hello again. Kathleen Dial, Executive Director, Development Services. So before I turn it over to a technical expert to present on the proposed changes to the Wellness Way Landscape Code, I thought it would be helpful to present some background information on the origin of the code as it relates to Wellness Way and some of the timeline of the development of the code. St. John's Water Management District, in collaboration with the Central Florida Water Initiative, have rejected a deficit in future groundwater withdrawals without negatively impacting wetland springs and water bodies. And so in order to develop sustainable development practices, the City of Claremont began working on an update to their landscape and irrigation code to reduce irrigation demands. In the state of Florida, about 50 to 60% of a home's water usage of potable water supply is on irrigation, and when that water supply is reclaimed water, the number goes to 70%. Consultants who assisted with the writing of the code include the outside collaborative Life Soils and St. John's River Water Management District. The Wellness Way Intensive Development list protection of key regional and ecological resources is one of the five goals, and one of the guiding principles references a green strategy considering balance of development, preservation, energy conservation, and water In 2023, the City of Claremont began drafting an updated landscape and irrigation code to reduce irrigation demands. In May, on May 10th of 2024, at a Wellness Way stakeholder meeting, developers and landowners were made aware that a landscape code was forthcoming. On February 7th of this year, Claremont held a Wellness Way stakeholder meeting, including developers, landowners, their landscape architects, and irrigation specialists, to present a draft of the code and listen to feedback. And on July 29th of this year, Claremont approved these changes to their citywide landscape and irrigation code. Currently, the county has four approved planned unit developments in unincorporated Lake County and Wellness Way. These are the four developments. Most notably, I wanted to pull out the landscape references within each planned unit development. Ridge View, which is mostly built out, does list that development of landscapes should be consistent with Florida-friendly landscaping practices, and it lists that their closing documents shall contain educational materials as to Florida-friendly and right plant, right place, as well as fertilizer requirements of techniques. The Schofield Planned Unit Development, now the Lake Haven subdivision. At the point that this was approved, the landscape code was underway, the draft was underway, and that is noted in their approved PUD, which references smart irrigation practices, topsoil amendments required, and notices given that Wellness Way specific standards were under development and, if adopted, would apply to that development. Since I am not a technical expert in horticulture, we have asked Brooke Moffiss to be here today. She serves as the Commercial Horticulture Agent for UFIFIS, and she'll present an overview of the changes to the code. Brooke specializes in Florida-friendly landscaping principles and urban biodiversity, and she'll focus her presentation on the research-based information from the land-grant university system. So I will turn it over to Brooke.
Thank you, Kathleen. Good morning, Commissioners. So good to be with you today. Okay, so I'm going to dive right into the code since Kathleen gave me such a nice introduction, but I am your local county extension agent here, and I represent the University of Florida and Lake County. So the very first section of the code that I'll discuss is the irrigation system design, and I'm not going to get into every single section of the code, but we are going to talk about some major areas. So irrigation plans must be submitted and approved before installation. These plans need to detail the system layout, the zones, equipment, plant species, and turf type. Irrigation systems must use soil moisture or weather-based controllers with a rain shut-off device. So soil moisture sensor is what you see in the left photo there. They are sensing devices that are placed in the ground so that it can monitor soil moisture, and it's typically at the turf grass root zone. And it allows irrigation to run only when needed. And then weather-based controllers, they are also called evapotranspiration controllers, but I'm going to call them weather-based controllers just for the sake of this presentation. They adjust irrigation based on weather and evaporation data. So there was, there's been multiple studies with the University of Florida that look at the efficiency and effectiveness of both of these devices, but I'm going to give you a overall review of some of the research regarding soil moisture sensors and evapotranspiration controllers, the weather-based controllers. So there was a review conducted in 2020 by UFIFIS that looked at both the soil moisture sensors and the weather-based controllers. This review looked at 17 studies, and they evaluated these devices across different climates and soil types. And the findings from the studies are summarized here. They had a 51%, or they saw that there was a 51% average water savings that occurred when they used these sensing devices in research plot studies. And then when they did single-family home studies, they saw that there was a 30% average water savings, again, in those homes. So when using these technologies in Florida, it is important to note that water savings are typically higher in the wet season than they are in the dry season when you're using these devices. And these devices also must be installed correctly, and they have to be put into an appropriate location in the yard to be effective. Now I'm going to move on to another section of the code that requires compost installation. But first, I want to back up. We want to talk about the construction soil. Construction activities often leave behind compacted soil, very little biological life, reduced ability to hold water, and low nutrients, and this makes it a very challenging environment for plants to grow. So incorporating compost into these degraded soils can increase water retention, it can decrease the need for irrigation, and improve the plant health. So the code requires compost installation, and compost must meet recognized standards through the U.S. Composting Council Seal of Testing Assurance Program. And then also receipts must be retained from when the compost is delivered to the site that shows the U.S. Composting Council Seal of Testing Assurance. And these receipts will be used during inspection to verify that this post-construction soil standards have been met. So for the research behind the compost applications, we actually have quite a few studies with the University of Florida, and they looked at turf landscapes. And so they found that irrigation can be reduced when growing turf grass when urban soils are mended with compost. So one of the studies found that they could use 50% of recommended rates, so half the recommended rates, 50% can be reduced for the maintenance runtimes of these irrigation systems when using this compost, 50% reduction in irrigation for the first two years. I would also like to point out that they also tried eliminating irrigation and just using compost, but the turf didn't maintain an acceptable quality. But they can still maintain an acceptable quality if we have about half the irrigation. So you've got to have irrigation to maintain an acceptable quality. So some things to consider with the compost is, we don't know how long the effects are going to last. We don't know the nit, or we don't have a consensus so far around the nitrogen leaching, although studies are currently being conducted and they're analyzing this very research to look at the nutrient leaching of compost. So this is just some food for thought. Now, we just talked about compost benefits for turf grass, and I wanted to share some results with you from a study that looked at native plants and urban soils with compost amendments. This was the study conducted in- This was the study conducted in Sunbridge that you may have heard of. In this study, we planted 26 different native plant species in urban area. In the photo on the left, the native plants were planted in urban-only soil, and these are disturbed construction soils, and they were irrigated every single week. In the photo on the right, plants were irrigated only as needed when we saw signs of wilting, and the compost amendments were incorporated into the soil. And that's, again, the photo on the right. So they were irrigated only when needed when we saw signs of wilting and compost was incorporated. So we actually found that when we irrigated as needed, we had an 80% water savings in those landscapes over weekly irrigated plots. And the compost helped maintain a higher quality of the plants, of most of the plants, I should say. And you'll notice the photo on the right, which again is as-needed irrigation with compost, we see more growth and blooms with 80% water savings. All right, I'll now move on to the landscape design standards. In the landscape design standards section of the code, Florida-friendly landscaping principles are discussed, and the following standards are specified. There is a maximum of 25% irrigated turf allowed, and again, that's irrigated turf. 60% of plants must be from the Florida-friendly, or I'm sorry, from the Florida Native Plant Society list, plant list, and 40% may be from the Florida-friendly landscaping plant list. Actually, let me back up, I think I said that incorrectly there. 60% of plants must be from the Florida Native Plant Society list, and 40% may be from the Florida-friendly landscaping plant list. Okay, so let's look to see what research we have that supports this. This is actually a research design that was conducted through the University of Florida IFIS, and in this, we looked at a 75% Florida-friendly landscape with 25% turf grass. Each landscape was about the size of an average home lot in Florida, at least one of the smaller lots in Florida. One landscape was planted with 75% irrigated turf grass, and that's the photo that you see in the top there. And this was irrigated with single-zone rotor sprinklers. This traditional landscape had 25% Florida-friendly landscape plants such as ground covers and shrubs. And then the other landscape that they looked at was planted with 25% turf grass and 75% Florida-friendly landscape plants, and that's the one, the photo that you see in the bottom right. This landscape was irrigated with zoned microirrigation and smart controllers, and it's, again, it's the landscape, the photo that you see in the bottom right there. Oh, sorry, I did not give you the bullets there, but I did discuss that. Okay, so let's look at the water use comparison. The Florida-friendly design, and again, this is the one that had 75% Florida-friendly plants, 25% turf grass. It used 70% less irrigation than traditional turf-dominated landscapes, and that was for the 12-month establishment period of the study. So over the 34 months after the initial establishment period, the Florida-friendly design used 84% less water than the traditional landscapes. They found in this study that major water savings were achieved by turning off the microirrigation to the plant beds and visually monitoring and turning it on when they saw signs of drought stress. And we also have further information that discusses expanding landscape plant beds with microirrigation and the water savings associated with this practice. It's estimated that if irrigated turf grass is converted to landscape beds with microirrigation, about 15,000 to 32,000 gallons of water could be saved per thousand square feet per year. So that's pretty significant savings. All right, so I'm going to move on from the 25% turf, 75% Florida-friendly landscape, and get into the native plants and the non-native plants research here. So, for this research, we had, this is related to the 60% native plant and 40% Florida-friendly plant requirements, and I'm going to be referencing a meta-analysis study. And a meta-analysis is a study that combines data from multiple studies, and they use that data and evaluate that data to look at trends, overall trends. So I'm going to be referencing a study that was conducted out of Rutgers University, and they looked at 165 different studies to address the native versus non-native. So what they found was the overwhelming evidence that native plants outperform non-native plants in supporting higher amounts and diversity of animals. The other key finding is that they have, they found that there were limited studies that had mixed results regarding the performance, water use, drought tolerance, and nutrient use of native plants versus non-natives. So we can't really say based on this meta-analysis that natives use less water and fertilizer than non-natives. Okay, the study also concludes that there has been a lack of studies examining the tolerance and performance of native plants in urban conditions. And while there is a lack of studies right now evaluating native plants in urban conditions, there are multiple studies that are being conducted. One study here in central Florida, that's the one I referenced earlier, that is occurring in the Sunbridge community. So before we move on from these findings, there's some important considerations with this section of the code with the native versus Florida-friendly plants. There are Florida-friendly plants that are not native that can still provide for pollinator and wildlife benefits. And it's also important that while all plants, whether native or Florida-friendly, have to be planted in the right place in order to be successful. And then also, this gets a little confusing, but all native plants are considered Florida-friendly, but not all Florida-friendly plants are considered native. So, that can get a little confusing. So, UFIFIS does not have specific research to describe a certain percentage of native and other Florida-friendly plants. All right, so I did want to mention this last research study that's in the works right now. So I mentioned there have not been a lot of studies on native plants in urban soils, but native plant species have been planted and evaluated in research plots at Sunbridge Community here in Lake Nona in central Florida. And I've been highly involved in this research project, and currently I'm actually analyzing the data so that we can better, make better recommendations regarding native plant performance in the urban soils here in central Florida. So those are the sections of the Wellness Way code that I was asked to highlight for your presentation. So I'll end the presentation, turn it back over to board discussion, but I will be available to answer specific questions.
Madam Chairman, before you go into board discussion, if I can go ahead and read the title of the ordinance?
Okay.
And then that way you're all set for discussion and public comment.
All right, great.
Okay, this will be an ordinance of the Board of County Commissioners of Lake County, Florida regarding the following sections of the Lake County Code Appendix E. Land Development Regulations, Amending Section 160002, entitled Wellness Way Development Standards. Incorporating the New Yard Pattern Book as an official exhibit. Integrating principles consistent with Florida-friendly landscaping. Providing references to official websites for approved plant lists. Amending Chapter Two, entitled Definitions. Creating Section 160004 to be entitled the New Yard Pattern Book. Providing for severability, inclusion in the code, and providing for filing with Department of State. Providing for an effective date. If you choose to approve this today, it will become ordinance 2025-39.
Okay, and we have several speaker cards. So before we do that, are there specific questions you want to ask right now, board members? Do you want to go ahead and move right into speaker cards?
Speaker cards.
Okay, all right. So I'm just gonna go in the order that, I just got those. All right. Shane Gerwig, and after Shane will be James Watson.
Very good, thank you Chair, Commissioners. I appreciate everyone's efforts on this goes through here today. My name is Shane Gerwig. I am a small business owner in unincorporated Lake County down in the Claremont area. So I wanted to kind of talk about this one specifically as far as Aether is concerned. You know, we've had some discussion already about, you know, how Senate Bill 180 is going to affect, you know, land use amendments and different things that we do with our land development codes and so forth. So as we take a look at this, I think that Aether is one of the fractures in this. So, but let me back up just a little bit, you know, before, and Commissioner Parks, you and I had conversations several years ago whenever I was a Florida Building Commissioner about trying to take a look at how we can move forward with some irrigation safeguards and some irrigation code to be able to make Aether a little bit better, conserve a lot of water and that kind of thing. So the first thing is I want to say is I'm not here saying that we don't have a water issue, that we don't need to take a look at water conservation within the South Lake County area. What I am going to say is there's several, there's a couple fatal flaws in this particular ordinance. First off is in regards to Senate Bill 180. With Senate Bill 180, it's going to preempt us from doing a lot of this and adding this information from our land development code to be able to put this in our code right now. So there's some discussion about, well, this doesn't really add additional inhibitations because it's revenue neutral. I don't believe that it's, and my experience is, from what I've seen, is it's not necessarily going to be revenue neutral because it's going to add a couple thousand dollars to the cost of each house. And even if it was revenue neutral, Senate Bill 180 does not specifically address the revenue side of it. It addresses the restrictive nature of land development codes. And then secondly, as far as Aether is concerned, is beyond that, and in my experience as a building official and so forth, there is a statutory provision in 553 that says that if we're going to do anything that is related to the building code, in a nutshell, we don't want to disguise it as a land development code. Irrigation and irrigation systems are covered in the Florida Building Code. As a matter of fact, the word irrigation actually appears 160 times within the documents of the Florida Building Code. So therefore, if we're going to amend the way that we do irrigation and that we change irrigation, we need to do it as a Florida Building Code amendment. We can do it as a local amendment, but that part of the ordinance needs to go through the right process and be done as a local amendment to the Florida Building Code. So with that, Chair, Commissioners, I appreciate everybody's time, and I am definitely available if anyone has any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. James Watson, and then Sue Egloff.
Good morning Commissioners. My name is James Watson. I'm a Florida native, and my wife and I moved from Florida, from Miami to Eustis over 35 years ago. I founded my design-build landscape construction company, Quality by Design, 32 years ago. Last year, we irrigated and landscaped over 4,000 homes throughout the state, from south of Tampa to up the I-4 corridor to Jacksonville and into Georgia, while always adhering to variable, varied municipal codes, ARB guidelines, and budgetary constraints of the builders and the homeowners. As a Florida native, I fully support the goal of conserving water and protecting Florida's natural resources and biodiversity. I am here today because I only learned about this proposed ordinance three weeks ago, and after reaching out to fellow landscapers, nurserymen, and tree farm owners, I found almost no one in the industry had heard about this proposed ordinance. After reading the proposed ordinance multiple times, I believe there are beneficial elements to it, but also significant problems. As written, it's confusing, overly burdensome to landscape and irrigation contractors, and will increase home costs without delivering meaningful environmental gains. I would very much like to share my thoughts concerning several mandates of this proposed ordinance. However, as we don't have time to discuss all of them, all of the issues now, I will leave you with just one ambiguous example. The proposed ordinance says, and I quote, "A maximum of 25% of the landscape area may be planted with irrigated turf grass." Other areas, I'm sorry, "All other areas shall be planted with Florida-friendly plants, Florida native plants, or drought-tolerant turf grasses that are not irrigated." So some people read this to mean you can irrigate plants, just not more turf, which is the way I took it. But then other people came to me and said, "No, no, no, that means other than the 25% turf, you can't irrigate anything. You can't irrigate the plants or anything." That, if that's the case, that's going to be a big problem. But no one really knew what the answer was. So, those are two very different interpretations. The ambiguity of this one sentence is an example of why this proposed ordinance should definitely not be approved today, but rather should be discussed, clarified, and revised with stakeholders from the industry. This is just one of many unclear provisions. Please refer to the document I sent to all Commissioners via email last week. This highlights examples in the proposed ordinance which require further discussion. Given the lack of awareness within the industry and the need to refine this language, I respectfully request the Commission table this proposed ordinance and hold workshops with all stakeholders to craft a version that meets water-saving and biodiversity goals without creating unnecessary cost or confusion. Thank you.
Thank you. Sue, and then after Sue is Cindy Newton.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I am Sue Egloff from The Villages. We have in our membership of FMPS, Florida Native Plant Society, Sumter, Lake, and Marion County. And part of what we do is we maintain the entrance of Lake Griffin State Park, which is in Lake. So we are very concerned about what Lake County does, as well as Sumter and Marion. I want to bring to your attention, we have talked a lot about irrigation, which is very, very important to also, the irrigation is not just the lack of water, but it's also considering the maintenance of our plants without a lot of herbicides, pesticides, and fertilizers, which are affecting our wildlife. And by having turf, it means less Florida native plants. Therefore, that means less birds, bees, and butterflies. That also decreases your amount of pollinators. So this is in a one-shot deal here we're trying to solve. I implore you to go forward and pass this. Maybe it's not perfect legislation, but it's a beginning and can be used as a template. And yes, you've emboldened me to go to Sumter County and see if we can get some like legislation to it. So thank you very much for your time. If you have any questions, please ask me.
Thank you. Cindy Newton, and then Banks Helfer.
Cindy Newton, District Four. I'm in support of the amendment. The 2020 Regional Water Supply Plan for central Florida determined that at that time, consumptuous use permits had already been issued for about 35% more fresh groundwater withdrawals than the Floridian aquifer could safely sustain. The plan stated that fresh groundwater withdrawals could not exceed 760 million gallons per day, including the upper and the lower aquifers. The consumptuous use permits had already been issued for withdrawing over a billion gallons per day. Our lakes and springs' health is degrading, which affects not only our drinking supply, but also our ecotourism. Increased water conservation is essential to protecting our water resources. Turf grass consumes excessive water and fertilization, and this ordinance does limit turf grass. Combo soil, base soil enhancement during construction can significantly help keep landscaping healthy and reduce the water usage, you've already heard. Some of that is improved soil structure and water retention. The poor compacted soil that's left, adding compost improves the soil structure by breaking up the compacted soil, creating spore spaces that allow water and air to penetrate more easily. It also increases the water holding capacity. It acts like a sponge, increasing the soil's ability to hold the moisture, especially in our sandy soils. This means you need, you can water less. It also promotes the healthy plant growth. It allows for stronger root system. The healthy soils promotes deeper, more extensive roots, which makes it resilient to drought. Increased resilience also helps with not having to use as many chemicals. Compost amended soils also absorb water more efficiently and effectively, reducing the runoff. And of course, with runoff, you have the association of the erosion and sediment loss. This also helps with our recharge of our groundwater. So the increased water holding capacity and healthier plants resulting from the compost lead directly to a reduced need for supplemental watering, especially during our dry periods. So thank you for your time.
All right, and after Banks, then Jean Bennett.
Farmer, Banks Helfer, South Lake County, Clayro District. Wouldn't it be great if water was infinite? was infinite? When you look at our planet from thousands of miles away, we are a blue globe. We are full of water. You would think we would have enough water for everything we need. Yet, potable, usable, cheap water is not infinite. In fact, it is limited. Just ask residents of Arizona, Utah, Colorado, Nevada, or even California. They live in the realm of limited water resources every single day. Even if you look closer to home, as in Groveland or Claremont, just ask somebody in one of those cities what their water bill is. In fact, earlier this year, Groveland's water bill went up 40%. The outcry from the citizens was immense. Economically, we can allow our citizens to cut back involuntarily on their own because water will become so expensive they can't afford it. Or we can set a higher priority for our water because water is life. When we feed our lawns more than we feed our kids, it is time for another option. So please support water conservation before Florida becomes California. I am Farmer Banks Helfrich. May you all be blessed. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
All right. Jean Bennett, and then Tim Salin.
Hi. Good morning, and thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Jeanne Bennett, and I'm a former permaculture farmer and a rehabilitator of wildlife. So I'm going to give you a couple facts to kind of fill in what everybody's been talking about. One of the things I wanted to say is, because I'm in support of the bill, is about the wildlife that the native plants attract. So wildlife, as we know, is dependent upon not only the places that they can hide, they can feed their young, they can have nesting sites and things like that. So these Florida-native plants, rather than the turf, is super important. Because just since I got here like six months ago, there's been so much of the area that's been devastated, just taken down to build houses, and we all need someplace to live. But these other native plants and the wildlife is now getting crammed into smaller areas, which means that the idea of the old turf, you know, surrounded home is pretty much not going to be sustainable at this point. In fact, there's been so much building that now the bears and the big cats are actually coming into people's backyards. So it's a couple of facts. 97% of all songbirds, songbirds, including the seed-eating varieties, feed their babies insect-only diet. And the insects need these native plants to, not the turf, but bigger areas, for them to provide the insect home so that the insects feed the baby birds. So if they don't have enough baby bird food for that clutch, then the next year you have less birds. So now you have less birds eating more insects, and so it just keeps snowballing. So my point is, the loss of the habitat needs to be taken up by the residents and the, you know, community developed places, the parks. And what I'm suggesting is you have like oaseses where there's not going to be anything done, like just a beautiful cordoned-off area with some native plants and some trees. It doesn't even have to be shrubs. It can have like canopies. This is a bill for the people as much as for the wildlife, because I don't know about you, but I really don't want any more bugs. I want more animals that are eating and sustaining the habitat in a more balanced way. Just a couple more things. I actually moved here from Hawaii, and you would think that, oh, that's more beautiful. Why would you move here? But most of us think this is very beautiful, and I think it's as beautiful, if not more beautiful, than Hawaii, because it hasn't been overdeveloped. I was raised in a place called Free Hill, New Jersey, and about 50 years ago, they realized it was so overgrown with suburbs that they were going to have to take up the last remaining 3% or 4% of the land. The town actually bought it so that there was green space. It was like little areas. It wasn't a park. It was just, oh, okay. Well, thank you very much for what I was able to get across.
Thank you. Tim, and then Paul Owens.
Good morning, and thank you. My name is Tim Salin. I've been a resident of Lake County since 1980. "Real Florida, real close" is a really good slogan, and I think it means something to the residents of Lake County. The voice of the people has been very clear. We have heard just this morning about the survey that was conducted as part of the comprehensive planning project. We heard earlier last year about the Trust for Public Land polling results, and we saw the referendum results of 80% in favor of the bond program, which shows overwhelming support and demand for the protection of the natural beauty that exists here in Lake County, preservation of our natural resources, protection of our water resources, and growth management to combat the sprawl and the overdevelopment that people are saying is causing congestion and crowding. Lake County is facing a severe water crisis, as you know. It is happening right now. We've already spent in the Central Florida Water Initiative region over $347 million on alternative water source projects, and we will need to spend over $1 billion to make up for the 98 million gallons per day projected shortfall in groundwater resources by 2045. Somebody's going to have to fund those expenses. That infrastructure needs to be planned for. It's going to result in bonding projects by the county and by the utilities, which will be passed on to the residents. As Farmer Banks already mentioned, water bills are going up. $200 to $300 to $400 a month is not uncommon for Lake County residents to be paying in water. Why? Simply because they moved into a home, a new home, that they thought was properly built and developed, that has a landscape that cannot survive with reasonable amounts of irrigation. In fact, there's no amount of water that will allow that landscape to thrive. These landscapes are constant pain for the residents who are having to deal with high water bills, replacement costs, headaches, frustrations, challenges with their maintenance companies. So this ordinance is, in fact, very good and includes very excellent elements, which Brooke very well presented. The science is clear. Reducing irrigated turf grass makes a ton of sense. We're not limiting turf. You can go ahead and use bahia grass. I was not confused when I read the ordinance. It's very clear. Native plants, yes, water is clearly an urgent issue, and native plants, I believe, will help to reduce water. But that's not the only issue, in my opinion. The greatest issue of our generation is biodiversity loss. We don't talk about it very much. Some of the speakers here have. And the science is overwhelming, as Brooke pointed out, overwhelming that native plants support biodiversity. And what could be more real Florida than real native plants? I mean, that has to be our brand. It's not onerous. Over 22 jurisdictions in Florida already have native plants requirement. This is super common. And native plants are great. They're easy. We grow them. We're one of the largest producers of plants in the state. We're one of the largest landscape contractors in the county. And this all works. Don't let industry groups who didn't get a chance to read the ordinance, when you guys have been working on it and advertising it for over a year, tell you not to do this. I hope that we do it now. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Owens, and then Aaron Smith.
Good morning. I'm Paul Owens, president of 1,000 Friends of Florida. We're a nonprofit, nonpartisan organization that promotes planning for sustainable development to preserve our environment and quality of life and the economy that depends on both of those. We're a statewide organization, but I'm here today because we see the amendment to Wellness Way Landscape Code as a great opportunity to advance sustainable development and address Florida's burgeoning water problem. In a letter I sent to each of you a couple of weeks ago, I referenced some reports. 1,000 Friends completed with our research partners at the University of Florida. One of those reports, Water 2070, found that sticking with the status quo in water use, where more than half our potable water irrigates landscaping, is not sustainable. Without changes in our development patterns and landscape practices, we are overextending our water supply, degrading our natural systems, and weakening our agricultural economy. But if we embrace strategies like the proposal before you today, we can achieve a more resilient and prosperous future. We are proud members of the Eltside Collaborative, and as we've heard, its research and field demonstrations have proved that the alternative landscape practices promoted through the proposed code amendment will conserve water and also reduce pollution, enhance biodiversity, and lower maintenance costs without sacrificing community standards for aesthetics and utility. You have an opportunity today, not just to promote smarter land and water use in Lake County, and honor your county's motto. You can also distinguish this county as a leader for other communities throughout Florida facing similar challenges related to growth, starting with stress on their water supplies. If you have any hesitation about moving forward, you don't have to look very far back. Just to last November, when 80% of county voters approved the Lake County Bond Referendum that called for conservation and sustainable growth. To respect that popular mandate, we urge you to approve this amendment. I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Aaron Smith, and then Catherine DeYoung.
All right. Good morning. My name's Aaron Smith. I've been here since 1973. And I have been an irrigator. So I did irrigation with my father. We did it in the 80s. We probably did one of your houses, if I had to guess, Ron Smith irrigation. Since then, I have grown to have a company that our job, literally, for the state of Florida, and we manage daily 35,000 homes to make sure that they are compliant with water use permits. Schofield is, or, sorry, Schofield. Wellness Way, I am personally responsible for developing the McKinnon Project, Parkside Trails, oh geez, Lake Haven, Olympus. So I am deeply involved. And honestly, I'm not prepared. I found out about this last night. So I just want to be clear. One of the biggest things that we do on a maintenance, we save millions of gallons of water, and actually billions. I work with the St. John's Water Management District. I'm the consultant for many of these projects. And forgive me, I'm not prepared for this, but I'm just going to jump to the chase. We talk a lot about stuff that is feel-good. It's going to work initially. We have rain sensors. You know, one of the biggest things I do every day is explain to homeowners and residents that you're supposed to have a rain sensor, and any rain that you get is not bonus water. So let's just take, for instance, I'm going to be managing 45,000 acres out at the Wellness Way project. One rain sensor that doesn't work, or we sit there and one, one night, that's 120 million gallons of water that went down on that property that it didn't need to because a rain sensor worked. We have a lot of legislation about what it's supposed to do. What about after the fact? Okay, what about a year from now, two years, three years from now? How many of you have a working rain sensor on your house? Man, I'm sort of nervous. Okay, so let me cut to the chase. We have a lot of stuff. We talk about a lot of neat stuff. Who's installing the smart sensors? Who's installing the soil moisture sensors? And the picture you show, that's absolutely incorrect installation. Is that our example? You know, there's no incentive. Just like James said, I actually manage probably 50% of all those homes that he installs, that he talks about, the homes for Cherry Lake and all that other stuff. Anyway, what's the point of all this? Where am I going with all this? I can tell you right now, most of these homes are probably going to go to timeshares, renters, people that are not there. They don't care. They're just like, hey, what's it supposed to be? One of the things that we do, we make it clear to all people that move in that community, because I work for the developers, is the homeowner does not have rights to the water. We define budgets. We make it clear, this is how much water you get. This is, you know, if you go over that, it's not an option. We do enforce it. It can be enforced, and it works. And it saves billions of gallons of water. Okay? What is the turf area? You know what most of the homeowners are already knowing? Hey, okay, this is the ordinance. As soon as I'm moving a home, I'm ripping out the backyard and I'm putting down sod. The infrastructure's not set up for that. Is that clear in what you're proposing? Because that's what they're going to do. Okay? I just want to be clear. Homeowners come to Florida because they want Florida landscape, and these homes are not going to sell. I'm sorry. I did this this morning. So anyway, I propose that you table this and get people that know what they're talking about to put their input, like James and I. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine. Okay, all right. Do we have anyone online? Is that a no? I think I see a shaking no. Okay. All right. Okay, now we're, that's the end of the speaker cards. So we're going to bring it back to the board. And I just wanted to say something right out of the gate here, because I think that we've gotten a lot of great information today. And I personally am in favor of moving forward within ordinance for Wellness Way in order to adhere to the requirements for Wellness Way, which require, I believe, a reduction in efforts to reduce water usage and irrigation. And I do believe that, you know, the goal of promoting biodiversity, and I think these are all really great, noble purposes and missions. But I also, what I'm hearing today, and what I've learned in reading emails and talking with folks, is that I don't think we have it where it needs to be yet. I think we need to make some tweaks. We need to get some more input. And I think, I mean, even like with the last speaker, let's be practical and figure out how we're going to make sure this continues to work and does what it's supposed to do. And I know we've been at it for a long time, but it feels also like a lot of the people that have some really great input are getting here late to the discussion. And I don't know if it's who's, you know, if that's someone's fault, or it just happened that way, or that's the nature of these things. But once you actually start to get into the implementation side of it, that's when everybody gets interested, because everybody's busy running their businesses and living their lives. And so now we've got everyone's attention, and this is like such a great time to get that input and get this right. So that would be, I just feel like that needed to be said right out of the gate, just because I think we're close, but we're not there as far as getting it where it needs to be. So that's my initial thoughts. So turn it over to whomever wants to speak next.
I'll have, I just have a couple of comments on history first of this, just to be clear.
Do you think we're there, though? Do you think the ordinance is exactly where it needs to be?
I mean, I'm, let me discuss my historical comments first, and then I'll answer your question. So again, just to rehash things with history, and I appreciate everybody that's here today, even whether you're for or against this and having comments and input. That's always welcome at whatever point of the process. I want to make that very clear. So again, Wellness Way. Wellness Way was something different. From the beginning, the intent has always been that this would be something different. I had it, we had it ingrained into us, that if Wellness Way was going to be approved, and it was going to be the center of where growth would be channeled in the future, the next generation for Lake County, it would be something very different. It would have a much higher bar, and I use that term, I've been using that term for years, a higher bar of development than what you see, not only in other places of Lake County, but just around Florida in general. If you go to, I know there's been concerns about, you know, not knowing what's going on, and we weren't part of the process. If you go to Slide 5, I'll just show you where I think part of this is coming from, is that I do think you have some development now. Keeping in mind, when Wellness Way was started, it was hurry, hurry, hurry. There's big demand. We got to do this now. We got to put the plan in place because there's so much growth that's happening. So, and you've heard me use the term at times, this term at times as well, we're almost like building the airplane as we were flying. So there were code changes, processes that were going on as we were implementing Wellness Way, because so much growth and so much demand was generated in that area. We wanted to do it the right way. If you go to Slide 5.
It's the list of developments, right, that are already up?
Yes.
And running?
Yeah. So I mean, I just, I need, yeah, keep.
Scroll up. Scroll up. Aaron, go back. You just need to scroll up.
Almost there. Go on. Yeah, so, all right, there we go. One more. All right. So you take Lake Haven, for instance. "Notice is given that Wellness Way-specific standards are under development shall apply, if adopted." Okay. We've had Wellness Way meetings for four to five years in the city of Claremont, where 80 people show up. Could be the city of Claremont, utilities, public works, utility companies, and most, but most of them there are developers. So they know that this is, we've been talking about this. So to the question of where maybe some of this is coming from, maybe now there's this realization that, okay, we're getting close, and now these are going to be actually implemented, and there's some consternation over that. I get it. It's a business. But at the same time, I just need to make it clear that I've been letting them know, in those been letting them know, in those discussions, in those meetings, that there is a higher bar. This is not going to be landscaping that's done, you know, and I'm being a little facetious here, I know the landscapers, but a cheap landscape package house. This is going to be something that's going to be very different. There's the wildlife corridor that's connected to this as well, which is actually part of this project. We're trying to be a corridor-compatible community. We've embraced, locked our arms around being a wildlife, a Florida wildlife corridor-compatible community. Everybody loves what they're doing. You can clearly see in the recommendations, they talk about moving forward to make yourself corridor-compatible by changing your landscaping, going in a different direction than what the norm is, especially in an area like Wellness Way, which was once part of the Lake Wells Ridge and is now budding up to, and part of, the actual pinch point to the wildlife corridor from Shingle Creek into the Green Swamp. You have all these protections and land that's in place, but if you put what's normal and what you see in many other places of Florida up against that, you're really kind of, you're de-minimizing or minimizing the impact that a wildlife corridor can actually have. So I think it's counter to go against that, so we have to move forward with something. The savings are provable, and with all due respect, I think that, you know, maybe there was some implication or insinuation that there's no science behind this. There is great science behind this. There's a lot of, I give the outside collaborative a lot of credit. Putting a hypothesis out that this kind of landscaping would work, it's been talked about in years in the past, I mean, twelve years, fifteen, sixteen years, twenty years, oh, we should do more landscaping. There's never been a lot of science behind that. Well, kudos to them for stepping up and actually proving it. So you do see this year, you see a fifty, anywhere from a fifty dollar to two hundred dollar per month savings on water use. That's where you, that's where you would be making this up. Yes, it costs a little more upfront to do this. There's no argument on that. I do have, I do recognize the concern about, you know, what could happen. Yes, you get somebody that moves down from up north and, you know, a couple of years that they, they might rip out this landscape. Well, I think what is going to be done, and maybe it doesn't say this specifically in this ordinance, but I know that it's been mandated in other PUDs that we've done, is essentially, and the town of Montverde is doing this right now, is essentially a homeowner's manual. So like, you get a manual when you buy the house with, it's not just a cut sheet, but it's an actual manual, property owner's manual for the house. It says, this is why, this is why Wellness Way is special, it's different. This isn't some other place in Florida. This is why you have these requirements. You have interpretive displays that are set up in the neighborhood, done quite cheaply, actually. That explains why your neighborhood is different, why this development is different. So, you know, perhaps that is something that maybe we should have made clear in this ordinance. I know it's, it can be, it's made clear in the comprehensive plan and in the LDRs for Wellness Way overall, but I think that that is something that could address that concern as well. So I, I would, I'm all for moving forward with it. I think it can be, I don't think there's, I know there's some, I know there's some questions about whether you can plant, you can only irrigate the twenty-five percent, and you can't irrigate the other parts of your landscape. So I know there's some confusion over, and I'm guessing it's out of Section 3D, but it does say, all other plants should be planted with Florida native plants or drought-tolerant turf grass that is not irrigated. So that's referring to the drought-tolerant turf grass. So you can irrigate twenty-five percent of your, of your grass. It's just if you have more than twenty-five percent grass, that can't be irrigated. So, I mean, I, I mean, that's how I interpret that, seems to be pretty clear to me. So, you know, I'm forward, I'm all for moving forward with it. If we need to start tweaking and certainly meet with, you know, interested parties that are in the room to tweak it again, it's pretty easy to do an ordinance change, to add to it. Maybe we want to add the homeowner's manual at that point as well. So that's.
Are you not, are you not concerned about the issue raised about the Florida Building Code versus, you know, an irrigation plan being a Florida Building Code issue versus being an LDR? Is that?
I just haven't, I mean, I, maybe I need more explanation on that, but I haven't heard how this would be contrary to the Florida Building Code, though.
No, I think the question, though, was that you have to, like, actually put irrigation in your, you have to address it as a building code as opposed to a land development regulation because of the way that it's permitted. I mean, it just seemed like something that needs to be least fleshed out, you know, to know whether that's something that's a valid issue. Are you not worried about Senate Bill 182? I mean, that's another.
No, I'm not worried about that from my, from my previous comments, but I think if you're going to do something that's above the building code, that you get the local building code for the irrigation. That's what that, that's where that's coming from. This is pretty general. And I don't, I don't see how that would, I'm not sure how I, if I fully understand how the building code would apply to that, but, because it's. I mean, it might, it might be something if, like, if you're going to require, you know, some different backflow preventer or something like that, maybe that's where that building code comes into, getting a local building code amendment.
Can I just jump in? I feel comfortable passing this today, because I'm a big believer that you pass something, and then if there's an issue, you amend it. So maybe it's substantially complete, maybe it's almost ready to go, but these two gentlemen highlighted two concerns that we could literally amend verbally right now on the spot. We could, I'm not double-checking with our counsel, we could amend them on the spot. I mean, this man brought a biggie as part of the ordinance, this gentleman brought another one. I mean, we could literally in the record right now just amend those, try to placate, you know, this, this issue, fix this issue, and then move forward. I mean, I feel comfortable just passing this ordinance, and then if somebody comes up and says, hey, this is too burdensome, this is an issue, we amend it again. But I, I just don't see the point of just stopping entirely because there seems to be a minor issue.
Well, I think stopping is like, stop, stopping is like finite. What I was recommending is before you actually adopt the ordinance, you workshop it, you get some comments, you work on some language that everybody feels comfortable with, it still accomplishes the mission, but addresses the issue brought up by different industry stakeholders, which I think it's really important. When you're doing, when you're adopting an ordinance that impacts businesses and people who, just by virtue of what they do every day, they're experts, because they do it every day. So I just, that gives me a lot of consternation.
And I'll just say in response to that, I think that's obviously very positive, strong concern, but for me, the issue is this was, again, like Commissioner Parks said, limited, both in time, place, years going into this, it's a finite part of the county. I think if this was part of the county-wide plan, you know, the whole county was affected, I would be taking a little different approach. Not saying I would be against putting an emphasis on native plants countywide, but because this is really such a hyper-focused, hyper-studied, hyper-planned element of the county, I just look at it very differently. And so that's why I feel so confident just going forward with it, because it's just an element that's been, again, studied, planned, lots of input. And again, we're not saying your input doesn't matter. I think, I'd feel comfortable taking all the amendments that were brought up today, but I would do that as we continue to move.
And keep in mind that three minutes of speaking really isn't adequate for, we may have honed in on a couple of things that were raised. That's, that's why I really feel strongly about a workshop, because I think that you got to give them a little bit more time to flesh out what they think would be, because I do think that we have people involved that aren't saying, don't do anything. They're, they've got ideas to offer that could be blended with what's already been worked on. And, I mean, I love the idea of the kiosk, so that people know I'm living in a special place. I told you guys, I think it was the last meeting, I talked about the fact I'd been to a Devo presentation for like three or four hours on primarily the Lake Wells Ridge, and it is an incredibly special place. And there are a lot of, I mean, people would benefit as they move into that area to know more about it and why what they're doing matters, and what they're not doing is important, too, as far as that, the recharge of that ridge. So, you know, and I like the homeowner's manual. I'd like to see what that would look like, to see how manageable it is, and would that come out of the county? Would it be attached as an exhibit? You know, those kind of things, how easy it is for people to understand would be a really important part of whether it works or not. Understanding ramifications, if somebody rips out what they put in, what was in their yard initially, and if they go do something different, that could be part of the notification that's given to homeowners as well. So I think we can just get this better, and we've got to hear from Commissioner Morris, and we've got to hear from Commissioner Smith.
So Commissioner Morris, you want to go, or you want me to go?
Go ahead, go. I'll finish up.
So I see that there are some good parts in this ordinance. However, I see there are some very bad parts in this ordinance, so much so that it's government overreach, in my opinion. I'm all for a workshop. First of all, the sunshine law does not allow us to talk to each other about this, so we can't interject our ideas unless we're up here in the sunshine, so a workshop is a way that we can do that. We talked about irrigation a lot. A lot of this was, and I had a pleasure of talking to Tim yesterday. I'm a big Florida native plant guy. Every plant in my yard is a Florida native plant. However, there are some things in this ordinance that I totally disagree with. We were talking, most of the conversation today was talking about water and irrigation. We heard percentages, I don't know, and I'm sure that, and I don't want you to answer now, because I think we're going to have a workshop on this, I hope we have a workshop on this. How many gallons does a typical yard currently use today with a rain sensor? And what does that look like? You know, is it fifteen gallons? Is it ten gallons? I don't know what the answer is, but I'm sure these professionals know what the answer is. Some of the things that I really disagree with is you're mandating five hedges for every two thousand square foot of yard. Well, I don't like hedges, but you're telling me that in order for me to have landscape, I got to put hedges in my yard? And then you've got in here that you have to have a canopy tree in the front and a canopy tree in the back, but the canopy tree has got to be ten feet from your property line, minimum of ten feet, maximum of twenty feet from your property line. Well, a canopy tree, a canopy tree is an oak tree. So everybody's going to be planting oak trees. Oak trees have root systems, and they're going to push up the sidewalks. I think there's something else we can do there. You're, you're saying that we can only have twenty-five percent turf grass irrigated. However, you want to have, this ordinance claims to have bubblers on a, on a separate zone, which costs extra money. So there's a lot of things in this ordinance that people may not have read, they may have only saw the good things, as, yeah, I mean, it sounds great, twenty-five percent turf grass. Where are the kids going to play? Where are your kids going to play in your backyard? They're not going to run through your hedges, they're going to play in your grass. So I, I would really like to see a workshop to really dive into this ordinance. There is a lot of good in here. Commissioner Parks, I applaud your, your effort in this. I'm just sorry, we can't talk privately on some of our concerns, because, I mean, the law's the law, and this is the only way we can do this. I like that the people come out and spoke. This is exactly what a public workshop is for. I mean, it's what a public hearing is for, is to get the people's input, and I wholeheartedly believe that we need to have a workshop to get some of these and really have a longer conversation on some of these things, because I bet you none of us know how many gallons a typical irrigation system uses. And when we're talking about gallons of water, we're talking about Wellness Way. Everybody's talking about water, and they're thinking potable water. Wellness Way requires reclaimed water. So we're putting reclaimed water back into the ground, unless St. John's can issue a permit for a well. Well, if, if you want to go that route, then have St. John's have these requirements in their permit. Otherwise, they have to use reclaimed water, unless that's been changed. And I'm certainly not a fan of, we got to pass the bill just to see what's in the bill. So I would like to have a, I'd like to have a workshop on this. I think it's necessary, I think it's needed, and I think it's good to have the citizens come out and talk about the good parts of the ordinance and the bad parts of the ordinance.
Appreciate that. And I'm going to call on Commissioner Morris, but I want to, I just want to hearken back to something that you may remember, before you were on the board and I was on the board, and there was a big discussion about requiring zoia grass. And that got way down the road before the turf industry actually realized that that whole ordinance was about to be passed. And then the experts came in and they explained about the fact that, yeah, zoia works good in some locations and not in others. You got to look at the soil, you got to look at whether shaded, all of those things. And then the commission, actually, once they started hearing from the industry, they changed their position and they did something that was much smarter. So I just wanted to bring that up, because it stuck with me, the fact that, you know, they started down a road thinking, okay, this is the best thing out for, this is great, it's going to use less water, and it's going, but they didn't get all of the information first. And I'm not saying that, I mean, you obviously are immersed in this, and you have a lot of, you know, great experience in it. But I also think that there is a lot of good information that we're just learning and hearing, and I really want everyone to be able to be a participant in getting, you know, everything the best it can be, and the most likely that it will succeed. I think that's a really important part of this, is that it needs to be able to ultimately succeed when people are living with their, their yards and their landscape material. Commissioner Morris?
I'm for a workshop. I've heard both sides, and I think a workshop would bring a lot to the table. I think, I think my biggest concern is, quite frankly, that Wellness Way's been going on for fifteen years, and all I go out there and all I see is housing. And I don't think that's what the anticipated growth was. It was to be commercial, it was to be workforce, and a workforce center. And I know these things take time, but, you know, we need, we need to look at the whole concept down there and see if, did the county do it the best way, or would it be better off for somebody else to do it? But that's my personal opinion. We've spent millions of dollars down there already, and I think this is just a small piece of it. We'll just have to deal with the ordinance and see if we can do it the best way possible.
Yeah, and just to your point about the, the commercial, there are ratios in place, and there are actual projects that, right now, there are owners and developers that are working on implementation of some commercial projects. So it's, what often happens in mixed-use development is you see your housing happen first. It's just the nature of.
Yeah, and that, that comment, you know, I guess indicates that there's still some lack of understanding of Wellness Way, because you're exactly right, it does require the commercial. And you talk about overreach, I mean, I'm going to, I'm going to mandate that somebody build, you know, only X number of dental shops and, you know, right down to some kind of specific commercial, you know, that's perhaps government overreach for that area, but, so that is not the, what you're seeing out there now, yes, is housing, and it's all the more reason why we're trying to get ahead of these, this ordinance and get this, get this in place as soon as possible. I also will point out again that, so St. John's River Water Management District has been a part of the process. They were at Wellness Way, so they're, they're supportive of this. I mean, they're supportive of the ordinance moving forward. I, I'm not as experienced as some of the experts in the room. I will not profess that I've done four thousand. I have done a lot of landscape design. It seems, yeah, I could see a couple of the questions, you know, that could be, could require clarification, but it's, but it's pretty, it's pretty clear for me to follow what is required of somebody that's landscaping in Wellness Way for this. And I'll also point out, too, that And I'll also point out too that, you know, Claremont... So again, to all the expert... The conversation about the experts. So Claremont has adopted this already. So it's important... Well, yeah, I mean, it's important because we have an agreement with them to do development together in that area. And essentially, it kind of acts like a little JPA in itself. So maybe there's some way to tweak it a little bit, but... And as Commissioner Sabatini said, we could probably address some of those today. But, you know, going against and just dropping it all together, I know that didn't sound like that's what... At least one or two of you don't want to do that. I think would be very detrimental to trying to work with the city, the city of Claremont on this. I mean, if I were in their shoes and then we see some, you know, that they've totally... We've totally changed this, I would, you know, in their shoes, would be pretty disappointed to say the least. So I don't think it's overreach either because I think we're thinking about the savings, the numbers, you know, that the data that's been presented. You asked for that data. It's actually been presented about savings. What are savings?
By no means am I suggesting we just scrap this whole thing. I'm just saying that we need to get the professionals in and really look at it. For another example, you have on here that we have to put compost and it's got to be six inches in the turf. It's got to be rototilled in. Is that a county employee that makes sure that happens? And if it is, do we have a county employee that can do that? And also in the ordinance says that the compost has to be some type of certification. And if it's not that certification, then the county's got to certify it. Well, do we have somebody on staff that does that or can do that? And then a year after installation, we got to go back out and make sure everything's established. So now we are making more government instead of less government. So those are just things that I think we need to work on.
And I think you could do that with the irrigator.
And the reason why I would feel better if we had a workshop.
Yeah.
And you can address some of these things just by some of the language in here so that that burden falls on whoever certifies what's being done. And I don't know whether it kind of looks like every single lot would have a separate irrigation plan or have to be certified. Do we have a mechanism for having a master or irrigation plan or template that could be used per neighborhood? That seems like that would be a smart thing to incorporate, at least if we need to have language that allows that.
A template landscape plan.
So that, you know...
Well, that's what the... I mean, the pattern book is an example of what you're looking for.
But let's just say I have, you know, 300 lots and you have eight different models and each, you know, eight are basically the same. Are you going to have to get every single one sealed and certified?
Well, I mean, like the town of Mont Verde and some of these other towns around Florida, you submit a landscape plan and an irrigation plan with your... With each individual lot for submittal. As far as enforcement goes, the certification, if you present the certification that you've got the soil compass, it's not like you have to send somebody out looking at every single load to make sure. They've done their... Whoever's the applicant, they've done their... They've done what they need to by providing that certification. Who they buy it from will provide... Will present that certification. It's like, here's my proof and then that's over with. As far as inspection, yeah, you have to... We have to send people... We send inspectors out to look at neighborhoods. I mean, that's to make sure they're built according to the PUD. That's already done. So, yeah, you're going to look to see whether they've landscaped according to their plans, but they're going to be out there looking, checking. I mean, it could be... And I don't know how the staff does it, who does exactly what, but there's inspections of infrastructure, you know, all the little details. You do walkthroughs.
But it sounds like a valid thing that we could learn in a workshop and make sure that we've addressed it so that we're not actually creating more work, but we're making it so that the private sector can actually do the certification. We're not having to do... I mean, obviously, we have... There are certain inspections that have to happen and there's ways to do them in a cost-efficient way on the government side so that, you know, when you're out there, you're doing multiple things at one time from an inspection standpoint. But that... I've heard that concern raised, so I just want to make sure that that's covered. And just to the point about Claremont, I mean, it could be that we, once we work on this, that Claremont actually wants to make the same changes so that we do have exactly the same ordinance, right? I mean, if they hear those concerns and they think that they're valid and it makes a lot more sense to have the same plan or ordinance, then maybe they would go back in and make amendments.
Yeah. No, I understand that.
So let me... Let me add something. Mr. Parks said the developers were okay with the plan, with the landscape plan. But you'd stated that they were okay with it? The developers?
The developers have been sitting in on Wellness Way meetings for years, knowing that we're doing this and looking. And actually, they actually had a part, a hand in the one we did, the landscape plans for the roads as well, which was done last year or two years ago.
So why don't we do this? Why don't we make it a recommendation instead of a requirement?
Because...
Because right now, it's you're telling them what they're going to do and at least give the homeowner an option.
Well, because if you don't...
I support... I mean, just counting here, it's two, one. I think Commissioner Campion just wants a few edits and then, I mean, I definitely don't want to revert the conversation to just an advisory thing. I think it should be...
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if you do... I mean, we could be gone and Wellness Way still be going and somebody's interpretation of real Florida, real close, and what's been interpreted for the comprehensive plan and what's interpreted for the Wellness Way planning more specifically, isn't there. It's going to be loose. It's going to provide a... That would... You talk about problems for staff. That would be a nightmare for staff if something's recommended. I mean...
So I think this conversation can go on for another two hours. So I would like to make a suggestion. I'd like to make a motion that we table this ordinance until staff can come up with a good date to have a workshop to fully vet the ordinance with everybody involved.
And before we... Okay, let's... Do we have a second?
Before a second, I would just say, can we just put a time certain on the workshop thing because I don't want this to be...
Yeah, we'll say no more than two months out.
Okay, so was that... Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second. And for discussion, I feel like anyone who's been a participant and sent emails or come to this meeting or wants to be involved, what we need to get are... Is recommended language suggestions as opposed to, don't like this, don't like that. What would you propose as an alternative in order to meet the ultimate mission, which I think we all agree, is lower the water usage, keep people's bills, you know, to something that's manageable, but we're also protecting the environment and protecting our aquifer, biodiversity so that we're promoting... And Commissioner Parks makes a really valid point because we... Wellness Way is right there where the wildlife corridor comes across and over to Lake Luisa and that's a really, really big deal. So, I mean, these are really important things and I think everybody's agreeing that the real Florida, real close, we want that to mean something. So bring your suggested language. Spend some time looking at the irrigation side of this and make sure that this makes financial sense or if there's something that can be done, make it, you know, more feasible financially.
If I may add, not only look at the irrigation side, but look at the requirements on the landscape side as well. The hedge requirements for every 2,000 square feet, 25% turf, where you put your canopy trees, you look at all that. So look at... Take this ordinance and dissect it. Professionals out there, we're looking for your help.
Okay, so we'll get the notices out on our workshop date.
We got to vote on it.
And, okay, so we're still in discussion. We've got a first. We have a second. That would be workshop and we bring this back in 60 days or we have the workshop within 60 days? Did I understand that right?
I had a workshop. The motion was to have a workshop, no more than 60 days out.
So that would put it in the October timeframe.
I hate to rescind...
Or sooner.
I hate to rescind my motion, but can we just do the workshop in 30 days, final hearing in 60? I mean, to me, that's...
Sure.
Florida legislative session is 60 days. So it's like, I just feel like we're taking way too long.
Melanie, is that doable? Can you make the notices work?
It's doable. However, it'll be a tight timeframe. We have a 10-day advertising time for any meeting of the commissioners. Getting your schedules coordinated might be difficult as well. And then in Jennifer's defense, she's preparing for final budget hearings coming up in September. So probably for her timing and jump in if I'm incorrect, Jennifer, she's probably wanting... Would be more interested in a workshop beginning of October, mid-October, so she can get through the budget process.
We still do that within the initial motion and second? Nothing's been changed since that initial motion?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay.
I don't want to... I mean, the budget is... We got to be focused on that.
So we'll schedule the workshop within 60 days. We'll get the input at that time. And then, once we know how many comments we have to make, then we can re-advertise for a final public hearing on the ordinance.
Okay.
And if you don't have the ordinance, you can do a public records request.
Just a request.
Just request it and we'll send you the ordinance as it's written today.
It's also online.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. And Commissioner Morris, was it an aye?
Aye. It was an aye.
Okay, all right. It's four to one. That passes and we'll have our workshop within 60 days. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate your participation and your input. Okay, let's take a... It's 10, almost 10 after 12. Can we just take between 5:00 to 10:00, we're back in seats within 10 minutes?
And they're spending more money on gas. So I would not recommend ordinarily spending more money on right of way than absolutely necessary in what appraised value is, but I think considering those factors. And there's one more factor, and we haven't really talked about it very much, but we all know that Mr. Brochek hasn't been easy to work with. Through the years, we have tried to acquire more right of way on Britt Road. It would be fabulous if Britt Road was wider, and we've tried, but he has never been a willing seller. And a part of the reason he has not been a willing seller, because I've heard it from him many years ago and at various times, is that Britt Road is a, basically a prescriptive roadway. So from his family's perspective, they've always believed that that road was never purchased by the public, and yet the public used it. Now granted, the Florida statutes was used, maintenance map procedure was used in order to technically acquire Britt Road, but that has always been a contention and an issue with Mr. Brochek. And so I just feel like that's one more factor here that is very unique, is that he felt that and feels that that road was never purchased to begin with, so it's not as if we're paying for something that we already paid for before. So I just wanted to put that out there. I've had to explain to a lot of constituents the facts surrounding this situation because they really don't, they're very unhappy about the fact that it's taken this long, and here we are in August, and this happened in October of last year, and why isn't the road even being worked on? And trying to explain to everyone that without a willing seller, it makes it next to impossible unless you're willing to do eminent domain. That's not something that our board wanted to do, and the concern was even if we did go down that road, that we would be doing this for several years to even get the right of way. So now we have a willing seller, he's willing to sell, this is the price that he's asked for, yes, it's above appraised value, but I think in light of the impacts on 44B, the impacts to our constituents' convenience, money out of pocket, time on the road, and the fact that if we don't get this right of way, and we try to build right inside the footprint of where the road had been, and we go one inch onto his property, then we're probably going to be in an inverse condemnation suit, which would be very expensive, very expensive, and cost us way more. So again, another reason to support 675. So I'm just asking for everybody's support, so we can move forward and get this road back in place and...
Moving to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Do we have any further discussion?
Yes, we've got a lot of discussion on this. So just so everybody knows that I am certainly not for this. It was appraised for 351,000. He wants 675,000, but that's not all. We have to pay his attorney's fees, but what really gets me, can we go to the slide where it shows the parent parcel and the county parcel?
We're pulling that up right now. Second one down.
Okay, scroll down a little bit.
So the piece in blue would be the additional...
I guess this is gonna have to do, because my mind is better than this one here that I'm looking at. Can you not scroll down any?
No.
All right. So you see the parent parcel, and you see the county parcels in the blue, right? Yep. He also wants either 12 dwelling units added to the parent parcel, or, this is what really got me, or use public land in his open space designation, or his conservation designation. So he wants to use public land on his property to claim it as conservation. Now, if you don't think Mr. Brochek is gonna sell this property in the minute we do this and get more money, there's gonna be 100 and some homes out here. I just can't, I cannot agree with this, I cannot agree with the price. I said it eight months ago, we should do eminent domain. I don't like eminent domain, but by golly, this is a lot better than this right here. I can't see how anybody can say using public land for a private builder to use as conservation area is a good thing, no matter who you are. So I'm a strong no on this, and I implore the rest of our commissioners to vote no. I know it's a pain. Make it a one-lane road, put a stop sign on one end, put a stop, or a red light on one end, or a red light on the other end, and when the light turns green, the green goes and the red stays, and vice versa. But there is no way I can justify paying double the appraised value and using public land as part of a private builder's conservation area. It's crazy.
I understand you feel strongly about that, but I think that, you know, if he does try to sell the property for development, his remaining property, he's gonna have to go through the city of Mount Dora. They would have to authorize however density is allocated, and I think his request was that he would get credit for the conservation area. You know, it's creative, but it's not, in my mind, it's, you know, you move density around in order to create conservation areas often, so...
And that was my question. So we're not on the hook to ensure that that's going to happen. He has to still deal with Mount Dora, right?
Correct. Ultimately, it would be up to Mount Dora if the property was to be annexed, which we would assume it would be, that Mount Dora would either approve or not approve either additional 12 units of density on the property, on the parent parcel, or a recognition of the open space calculation using that public land.
It could say no.
They could say no.
So we're not giving him 12 units right now?
It would ultimately be part of a development agreement, so...
Well, if he doesn't want to go into Mount Dora, he still gives us 12 units.
It's up to Mount Dora if they want to give him those additional 12...
If he wants to stay in Lake County, does he not get those 12 units? He would get those 12 units in Lake County.
In Lake County, he would.
He would still get those extra 12 units.
But we don't have utilities, so that would affect the overall density, Commissioner Smith. So you wouldn't be able to maximize your density.
This is absolutely crazy.
What's crazy is people not being able to get where they need to go, and having to go miles and miles away around this. And this is a creative solution, but it'll get the road back in place. And I also think it, from a safety standpoint, it just adds more time and distance if we've gotta get to someone with public safety vehicle. You gotta either go to 437 or 44B. One of those gets shut down, then you're really in a bad spot. So it just, it needs to get reopened.
So we're going to add more houses, we're gonna add more traffic to a road that can't handle it, because we can't get the right of way to make it wider anyway. Don't we have the same issue on, down at Lake Shore Drive in Clermont, where we couldn't get a bridge, we had to have a bridge to make it wider, to make it safer? I mean, we have these issues all over.
It's unique. This is really unique.
Sure, it's unique. It's unique for this area. Clermont's got a unique area. Fruitland Park's got a unique area, so...
And we're not approving any development today.
I just wish that y'all would step back, take a look at this. It's just, he's trying to take advantage of the citizens of Lake County, and I can't let him, I just have a problem with that.
I think you make very, very strong, very good points, but at the end of the day, I do think this is a very peculiar situation, and the necessity, because the offloading and the traffic issues on a road that's already pretty bad is unique in the county, in my opinion, and that's the only reason why I think it makes sense.
I think the word you used is perfect, peculiar.
Yeah.
But we've got to look out for the people in this area that need to be able to get from point A to point B, and we gotta get this done. So we have a motion, we have a sec. In favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Absolutely not.
Okay, four, that was four one, in favor of moving forward with this contract to purchase the right of way and the land to move forward with the Britt Road reconstruction where the washout occurred. Okay, moving ahead to tab 24.
Okay, I'm gonna ask for Erin to go ahead and pull up the presentation and help me with advancing the slides, if you could. Go ahead. So this is to provide the board with proposed 2026 legislative priorities that would be presented by the chairman at the legislative delegation. However, this is just for discussion purposes, where I'm happy to add, delete, anything you would like to. This is just staff recommendations at this point. If you do wanna make some changes, we'll do some research and get some data back to you on the 26th. The delegation meeting is not until the 27th, so we have time to look at it one more time before the delegation meeting. Go ahead, Erin. So I'm gonna give you a little bit of background. We're gonna go over the status of the 2025 legislative priorities. However, Chris did a pretty good job this morning to go, going over that. Proposed 2026 legislative priorities, and finally, the requested action. So as you know, each year, the board does submit a list of priorities to the Lake County Legislative Delegation at the public meeting, which is on the 27th, as I mentioned earlier. We do work with our lobbyist, Chris Carney, who is with Gray Robinson. They work with us to obtain funding for approved priorities, as well as track legislation that could affect the county negatively or positively. At times, we do go to Tallahassee to meet with our legislative delegation. Last year, several key staff members and commissioners did go up to Tallahassee to further our interest. As Chris mentioned earlier, the one project that was funded last year was the South Lake County Public Safety Complex. This is for the Wellness Way area. This was a public safety complex that would be multipurpose. It would be used for a fire station in the area. It would be used as a smaller substation for the sheriff in the area, and we were going to, we are also planning to build heliports to be used by the sheriff, as well as Orlando Health. So this is a true public safety complex. We were awarded $1 million for the design of the project. What was not funded was the Golden Triangle Regional Park East Campus at $500,000, the East Lake Sports Community Complex at $500,000, and the Workforce Training and Continuing Education Center, which was the second-floor build-out of the Kagan Crossings Library in the Four Corners area for $750,000. So proposed for 2026, it was quite a segue we had into this. So Britt Road Flood Resilience and Culvert Upgrade Project, so as we just talked about, we had the 15 inches of rain that fell during Hurricane Milton. It did blow, wash out a portion of Britt Road. This is the connector, the north, one of the north-south connectors from Wolf Branch to State Road 44. That's a pitcher to the right of the blown-out area. So we are requesting $2.5 million for a design, engineering, and reconstruction of the washed-out two-lane roadway with box culverts and riprap basins at the culvert inlets and outlets. So the design would include, improve the flood control, it would allow for the natural flow of water through the culverts, and also reduce the velocity of the water, so it enhances storm water management and reduce the impacts on the neighboring properties. Next, we have a judicial center expansion. I think all of you have had a conversation with Judge Baxley. I have as well. We have been notified by the state that we will be getting at least one new circuit judge. However, there is a real possibility of getting two. Judge Baxley has indicated that they will need additional courtroom space, as well as judicial suites to accommodate the additional staffing that will be coming with the new judges. Additionally, there's been concern from many members of the public, as well as staff that work within the judicial center, of the safety of crossing over from the parking garage, which is across Sinclair, over to the judicial center. So we are also looking to design a, an elevated pedestrian, enclosed pedestrian walkway over Sinclair to ensure the safety of pedestrians as they cross over Sinclair from the parking garage. So the legislative funding request would be for $1 million for a master site plan and architectural design for the expansion of the judicial center, as well as the enclosed elevated walkway over Sinclair. Next is the Neighborhood Lakes Gateway Center. So the Neighborhood Lakes Park is over at the area that the Wakava Trail leads into Lake County from Seminole County and Orange County. It's an entry point into the regional trail system over there, and we are looking to have parks and trail staff collaborate with our library staff and make this a one-stop-shop, so to speak. This would be a full-service county library system, or county library, which we need in the East Lake County area. We also will have community gathering spaces, meeting rooms, concession area, and a bicycle repair shop, because this would be considered a trailhead over the Neighborhood Lakes area. So the legislative funding request is $800,000 to fund the design, engineering, and permitting for the new facility. And that's just renderings that we've come up with. This has not actually been designed at this point. And then transportation funding. We had a lot of conversations about this earlier, the transportation funding conundrum that we find ourselves in with the rapid growth in the area. So this is just a basic request, since we have the rapid growth, and we've been working with District Five DOT staff, as well as MPO, to identify and prioritize our most urgent needs for the upgrades to the transportation system. However, due to the rising construction costs and the limited funding, we're not really making a lot of headway. Commissioner Campion mentioned State Route 44B. 441 needs to be expanded in several areas. We have county roads that are actually state road relievers, such as Wellness Way, which is a reliever for Highway 50. So there's a lot of projects in the pipeline that are being slowed down by the lack of funding being allocated to DOT. So the legislative request would be for the state to provide DOT with additional financial resources, so we could accelerate the vital infrastructure improvements, not only on the state roads, but on the county roads that are providing relief to the state roads. And then that's all we have, and we're open for discussion.
On that slide, I think it would be helpful to list the roads that are the, either state road relievers or state roads, that we're asking basically for, you know, the state to get caught up on these, so that we then can use our annual MPO allocations for all of the other local roads. But it would be helpful, I think, if we actually show how much those projects cost, because, you know, they may think, okay, well, we'll give you an allocation for, you know, X million dollars for this. Well, 441 widening from Donnelly to Renegars is like a $35 million project. 44B is a $28 million project. You know, so it's like, I think we need to show why it is, that if the state doesn't catch up on these, it is absolutely impossible for Lake County to fund these. And these are state relievers or state roads.
And we can identify those specific roads. Public Works has these all laid out. We have the cost, and we'll put more detail into the actual legislative requests that we submit.
19. 19 out of 24s.
19 out of 24s, correct.
So I have, yeah, a question about transportation funding. I think this is good, like a policy statement that we're putting forward. If I had to characterize it, is that correct?
Yeah, like a law change.
Yeah. And I like the numbers, and even putting in the number of how much our, the cost of materials is going up, so that it's right in the document there, that that's a challenge that we're facing. Not saying we should do this, but maybe just to think about this, something I said earlier, do we wanna get specific about some legislative changes that could help us fund? And I mentioned, like, doc stamps earlier, that if it were, if you were able to use a portion of that for transportation project with guardrails, I think was the term used for that, could that be a, is that something we wanna put in this legislative priority?
Doc stamps get everybody worked up.
I know they do, but I mean, it's, but I mean, nobody wants to raise taxes either, though, so, and I'm not saying...
Right, but it sounds like there's revenue in the county, in the state budget and reserves, where you literally aren't saying, we're gonna create a new funding source, we're gonna like focus on getting caught up versus having a revenue stream. I think maybe important to separate the two.
I understand. I would say this, though. There is what appears to be a lot of money there, that's, what was the term, that it's in reserve, or flush with cash, or whatever, for, but I mean, you're splitting it among 67 counties. Really, what's, how much is gonna be left for us to improve some of these projects? So if we're able to use to get to the projects that will never get funded, like you said...
And maybe we ask for the top 10 growth counties, the top 10 impacted county, or whatever number gets us into that group, or something like that. I'm just afraid if you go down the road, I see what you're, I understand what you're trying to do.
Yeah.
I'm just afraid that if you go down that road, then it kinda gets lost in the message of urgency, with, which we need help, we need catch-up funding.
Yeah, and, I mean, I don't have, I mean, there's impact fee legislation, you can't really bring that up, but, and, you know, impact fees are pretty high for transportation, at least in the south part of the county. So I'm just looking, I'm just thinking out loud here about what else, even more specifically legislatively, that could help us with the tool, with the resources that are already there, not like new taxes or anything like that, but legislatively laws that could help us fund our roads better. That was the only one that I can think of right now, but we have a couple weeks.
I can bring an updated presentation to the 26th agenda, or 26th...
So you don't understand what I'm asking? I mean, is there like Chris, or somebody that can maybe help us with this? I mean, I could go into FAC and see what they're doing, but I don't know if there's some laws that, that, we're just, because it's extensive, that some tweaks to these laws that might allow us to reallocate more to transportation, is all I'm asking.
And maybe that's the kind of thing, that if you could get a, I was gonna say congressman, but a legislator, to be someone that champions a bill like that, versus this being more of a, the state of Florida, we need to, we need to address the backlog.
This is just a statement.
This is more about, and I would even, I would change the wording, so we're focusing on basically the backlog of either state roads within our county, or state relievers, you know, or relievers for state roads.
But we're making a, we're making a statement, and this is just like a policy, general policy statement. It's not gonna necessarily be some specific to certain laws.
And if you think about it, a lot of our complaints on our, on our transportation system is state roads. They complain about 441 all the time, 27 all the time, 44 all the time, 19 all the time. Those are all state roads.
And here we are, smack dab in the middle of the state of Florida, everybody's coming through our county.
And we got a big transportation, we're a big transportation corridor for our services and goods.
Yeah.
So one thing that might be a little specific, and maybe we can work this into the comment, just in a general sense, would be assistance with more of this intelligent transportation management, you know, managing the signals, getting...
You're thinking like a planner, Commissioner Parks. We gotta like, we gotta get across the finish line.
But I know that might...
We have to get across the goal line here.
That could be helpful, yeah.
Could, could, is this a discussion where we can throw out an idea to have something? Is there any way we can throw out something that says, hey FEMA, you need to pay us back in less than 10 years?
That's federal.
That's federal.
Well...
This is state.
Well, tell the state to tell the federal.
They're talking about all types of FEMA reform issues right now. Everything's on the table.
We can, we can work on that with our federal...
What if the state relieves the counties while, and the state waits for the money back from FEMA, but the state funds the, what the counties are owed, or something like that? So that we're not the ones...
They got the money to do it.
Yeah, and I just know that we haven't been paid back anything much yet, right?
I think we received about $2.5 million so far.
Out of?
Out of about 14 or 15.
Right? Not much.
No. I mean, it doesn't hurt, too, to highlight this problem, if they're really, they're working on legislation, and that's all been, you know, it's at the forefront. We'll bring to the forefront the fact that we're still waiting for money from the last FEMA, you know, funding reform, or state, I don't know how you would word what we're asking for, but, like, even on this, is there a state law that we could actually point to? To, you know, the law where it prescribes how FDOT districts are funded in the MPO system, is that like state statute, or is that an administrative rule, or is, could, is there like a specific, like, provision we could cite that would need to be?
We'll have to look at that. We're not sure if there's an actual prescribed allocation of funding through DOT into the different districts, so we could look into it. Okay.
So again, what's...
The only thing I would suggest is we don't ask for too many things, keep it simple, and give them the backup information, because they're getting inundated with these requests.
Yeah, but I think what's really important, we need to not leave something out that's super, super important for us, even if it is. We talked in the past about, oh, it's only five things, don't overwhelm them.
Native plants.
Well, as much of a native plant guy as I am, I would not wanna put that on legislative agenda. But I think that we can't leave important stuff off just for that, but we have time, we have, what's the time, what's the process on this? Because I'm, I mean, we can...
So this is, I mean, we have plenty of time to change things later. We need to just get a general outline together for the delegation meeting, which is on the 27th. So I can come back on the 26th, which is our next board meeting, with some revisions based on the discussion today, kind of a final approval by the board, but even after that, we have until November to actually submit our forms.
Okay.
So this is just the initial, this is what we're thinking about, that the chairman will present at the delegation meeting.
And if individually, we wanna give you comments in the next couple weeks, we can do that.
Yes.
I just, I would just say, I'm sure everyone's gonna throw out great ideas. When it comes to policy, if we can just keep it at one, two, or three things, and very specific, right? The more specific, the better. Hey, change this formula, drop it by 3% to allow this funding at this level, the better. Because then, not only do you have, you can go to local leadership delegation, you go to the chairman, because the chairman of that committee, transportation, whatever, is gonna be like, okay, this is too easy. Like, you're asking for a modest change, I can go to the stakeholders, they're gonna look at this and be like, this isn't an issue, and then it starts moving. If it's abstract, it won't move. If it's top-heavy, it won't move. If there's, if you walk up with seven things, they're not gonna listen to any of the things. But I will tell you, like, if we just have a few policy changes we want, you can get them, especially if you start early.
I would, I would flip the order and put whatever we come up with as transportation is our number-one ask, because if we could get that addressed, then so many other things fall into place that we're able to take care of.
And these were in no particular...
And the other thing is consistency. So like, it's very hard to get the first, right? But if you do it this year, and it starts moving, then you turn back around, you're back on them again the next year, it's gonna pass. In two, three years, it'll pass. And that's the, that's the standard for a bill, two, three, four years, policy bills. So I would, whatever we want, put, and then, by the way, when I say keep the list short, one per silos, one transportation bill, one parks, these two, these sets of legislators are never gonna talk to each other, so it's really, you should have one in this area, one in that one, because they're, it's not like you're walking in and the same person's getting overwhelmed. It's, they're really working in completely different areas. But I, yeah, the more specific, the better, because then you'll know immediately from the legislative chiefs, that, I mean, the guys who really run things, the staffers who've been there 30 years, like a guy named Eric Miller's run the local government committee for 30 years, he's gonna be like, yes, this is good or bad, right? And then you can work with him directly. And if he knows it's good, the chairman's gonna say it's good, and then it's gonna move, because they're all, it's, they're completely reliant on staff. No one's gonna tell you that, they're never gonna admit that, but the staff runs the show, so...
Okay, so I think this is good, a good start, and we can all kind of work on any other suggestions or ideas. Okay, moving ahead then to... Okay, moving ahead then to tab 25. Megan, Melanie's Emergency Management Director. Speaking of FEMA funding.
Good afternoon, how are you guys? I'm going to be going over a proposed ordinance update for our local code related to emergency management. Not necessarily related to FEMA funding, but it should help out with that situation for future activations that we might have. So the purpose of the presentation is to provide a review of the draft ordinance amending emergency management debris removal and recovery procedures for Lake County Board of County Commissioners. And before we do that, we're going to do a quick review of the current code, how it's currently written, and then do an overview of the requested changes and additions. So for the review, currently Article 6, Emergency Management Powers and Procedures outlines definitions, roles, responsibilities, and authorities related to emergency declarations and restrictions. It outlines prohibitions and restrictions that may be included in emergency orders, and outlines delegations of authority and orders of succession for these processes. So the first part is the order of succession for the authority for declaring a local state of emergency. So the order of succession is the chairman, then it goes to the vice chairman. And then if neither of those people are able to serve in that capacity, it will roll to the commissioner that has served for the longest continual period with precedence given between commissioners with equal terms of service, whoever's surname begins with the earlier letter in the alphabet. And then in the event that the chairman and the vice chairman are incapacitated and no other commissioners are available, that rolls down to the county manager, the assistant county manager with the longest service, the assistant county manager with the next longest service, and then the county attorney. These are the definitions included in the code for declaration of a local state of emergency. That local state of emergency would be for any occurrence or threat of a natural, biological, or technological, or man-made incident which results in substantial injury, damage, or harm to the population of Lake County. So declaration can be made in a couple of different instances, whether it's for weather-related events or non-weather-related events. There are some state statutes that guide how we are able to declare those local states of emergency. So typically, they only last seven days and then can be extended in seven-day increments. For non-weather-related events, they may be extended by a majority vote of the Board of County Commissioners in seven-day increments for a total duration of not more than 42 days. Additional emergency management powers that are included in this code include powers of evacuation, authority to impose restrictions, curfews, and then there are some exemptions and other kind of administrative coverage within this code. Covering evacuation, if there is a currently in place local state of emergency, and upon approval by the board chairman, the emergency management director, myself, has the power and authority to issue an emergency order to direct and compel evacuation if there's a threatened area within the county. So if we were to see something like extended flooding or other safety issue, that would be part of that code and authority. The emergency management power to impose restrictions. There are some specific restrictions that are listed within the code that the board chairman is able to impose. For some very quick overview of this language, this is the language that's actually in the code, but I'm going to give a quick summary of them. So that authority extends to prohibiting public demonstrations from the public right-of-way or any public property. It's prohibiting the sale of gas or other flammable liquids. It would limit water use to cooking, drinking, or bathing, prohibit open burning. Also, the ability to regulate use of any waterway, it established no wake zones, and regulate travel on roadways with some exemptions for folks who are traveling to places of employment or other places that they need to be. There's also an order where you can impose any other restriction needed as long as that restriction is not prohibited by federal or state law. The authority to issue curfew orders is also included in this code. So that is covered in terms of being tailored to the smallest geographic area possible and limited in duration and time. Again, that's dictated primarily through state statute. And then there are some exemptions to these orders. You'll notice highlighted, there is a requested addition as part of the ordinance here to include public works or other public employees assigned emergency duties to this list of those who are already exempted from some of these restrictions. Just since that makes some more sense. And then spending authority during a local state of emergency. The chairman shall have powers and authority to enter into contracts right now. The code is written to where those contracts cannot exceed $100,000 without approval from the board. Anything exceeding that amount requires board approval. And then there has to be a copy of the contract provided within 72 hours of execution. Some spending authority can also be delegated to either the county manager or the county emergency management director. This also includes spending authority of up to $75,000 for contracts and incurring costs to the county. And then this, there also have to be narrowly tailored orders, especially in related to a non-weather-related emergency. It has to be narrowly tailored to serve a compelling public health or safety purpose. And then that also has to be essentially advertised to the public as soon as possible. So typically, that gets posted to the county website as soon as it's ordered. And then amendment process is covered. Local state of emergency can be altered or rescinded either by issuance of a subsequent emergency order or by a majority vote for the Board of County Commissioners. And so that is the text of the current code as it's currently written. Now we're going to go into an overview of the requested changes through the ordinance. The first change that's going to be requested is through, is for emergency procurement. So this would increase the authority of the chairman to incur costs from $100,000 to $200,000. And it would increase the authority of the county manager to incur costs from $75,000 to $100,000. This update is needed to be in better alignment with FEMA policy and procedure, and it will provide for more streamlined and efficient purchasing during emergencies. So this should assist with FEMA PA guidelines, my public assistance guidelines, excuse me. And then for disaster debris removal works, this is an overview of some of what's going to be added to the code through the proposed ordinance. This will outline policies and procedures for disaster-generated debris removal. It will describe county authority to remove debris on county-owned property, county-owned roads, and private roads. And will define the conditions under which the county manager has the authority to determine that debris removal is necessary. So this is a slide that shows the different conditions. Essentially, one or more of these conditions must be present in order for the county manager to have that authority to decide that debris removal is necessary. So this is things like emergency services being unable to reach certain areas unless debris is removed. If debris is expected to cause disease or illness through the proliferation of vectors, or if it prevents regular solid waste collection or is damaging the environment. It's essentially one or more of these conditions must be present for that authority to be reached. It's also going to add conditions for hazardous trees and limbs, sometimes known as leaner hangers, so things that are leaning or hanging over either private or public property. And it outlined procedures related to removal of these hazardous trees and limbs resulting from disaster-related impacts. It also outlines responsibilities for removal of hazardous trees and limbs that are in danger of falling on a structure or other improved property, on primary ingress or egress route, or on the county right-of-way. So the ones that didn't quite fall during the storm but are in danger of falling afterward. And then private property debris removal is another addition as part of this. So this will be adding authority when a determination has been made by the county manager that removal is necessary to eliminate immediate threats to life, public health, safety, or to ensure economic recovery of an affected community. It'll essentially authorize the county to collect debris on private property, including gated communities. And that may still require right-of-entry. So this is going to outline procedures for requiring right-of-entry forms and other authorizations from private property owners, including within gated communities prior to the county entering, either the county or county contractors entering that private property for disaster-generated debris removal operations. There's also additions related to the responsibility of private property owners. So debris will need to be neatly stacked, piled, or placed within the three-foot roadside shoulder area, within either side of the travel lanes of the road. And it will need to be separated into stacks or piles of the different types of debris. There are very specific debris guidelines related to category A debris removal, FEMA public assistance reimbursement process, so they do need to be separated. And that part of that is going to be the responsibility of the private property owners. And then going further into that, it also needs to be placed so that it does not block the roadway, traffic signs, or signals, or stormwater structures. And then any damage that does occur to personal property by county staff or contractors, if it's placed improperly, would not be the responsibility of the county. And then if they do place anything for removal that is not disaster-generated debris or is otherwise improper, they would be responsible within 24 hours of notification that it is improperly placed or is not eligible for pickup, that they would need to be removing that debris from the roadside. Again, why these updates are needed, this will provide clearer guidelines for county debris removal operations, and provide for faster response and cleanup efforts for both public and private properties, essentially the entirety of the county. And these guidelines are in better alignment with FEMA requirements for category A debris removal, disaster reimbursement procedures. So essentially, if we have these guidelines in place ahead of time, that gets honored by that FEMA reimbursement process. And then the next subject that gets added to the code through this ordinance is going to be related to emergency temporary repairs. So that'll allow temporary emergency repairs on non-county maintained public roads with minimal work on private roads when needed to access public roads. And it also combine, defines conditions for immediate threats and the responsibilities of private property owners in relation to these roads as well. So for emergency temporary repairs, it defines emergency maintained roads as public roads that are not accepted for routine county maintenance, but for which the county has determined it can self-perform or contract emergency repairs during or following a declared state of emergency, essentially to restore temporary access so that people can get around. And it includes non-county maintained roads, used for ingress and egress by emergency services, evacuation, and those utility services to get power and other utilities back on as quickly as possible. So this is the guidelines that are included in the ordinance, essentially stating that after a declaration of the local state of emergency, county manager is authorized to perform emergency protective measures. So things like grading or filling, compacting road services, placement of temporary fill material to address flooding, or other disaster-generated issues that occurred from whatever incident may have happened causing the damage to the road. And this also goes into essentially what is deemed temporary and what is deemed as an improvement to the property. There can be some questions relating to FEMA public assistance reimbursement as to whether or not the repair was an improvement to the property. This is essentially stating that if we are using what is modernly available to us to repair a road, then that's not considered an improvement or an upgrade. So it's essentially, we're going to repair with what's available to us to make, you know, make the quickest work of the problem. And it also will say that we are not required to conduct pre-construction hydrologic and hydraulic studies, H&amp;H studies, or environmental reviews, as these are, this is limited work so that we can do protective measures and restore immediate access. This is not a major repair. And then this is also making sure that this does not imply long-term maintenance of these private roads or otherwise non-county maintained roads. And then this is just going over.
Excellent. I don't know why it's not going.
Could you advance for her? Her battery's died.
It was?
Her battery died. Oh, the internet's down in the building.
It kept switching the mic on me. I was like, why? The battery's not on, like, that's so weird.
There you go.
Okay. So this covers circumstances where county maintained or emergency maintained roads intersects with a private road or private property, and emergency access cannot be restored without impacting the private infrastructure. It again gives the county the authority to make those incidental repairs or modifications. And again, it covers the process for getting a right-of-entry agreement in that instance. And then we would document those emergency actions for additional, you know, coverage for mitigation efforts for future grant funding opportunities. Go ahead. So why these updates are needed is that it establishes clear authority to act post-disaster, and it'll shield the county from liability and policy ambiguity. And again, it supports that eligibility for public assistance, federal highway administration funds, and state aid that's needed immediately after these very expensive storm situations. And it aligns with FEMA documentation and procedural expectations, and it ensures rapid access for public safety, public works, and utility restoration. And it really just codifies that practices that are already performed by public works post-storm. So the requested action today is to recommend approval to advertise an ordinance amending Article 6, Chapter 2 of Lake County Code entitled Emergency Management Powers and Procedures.
So moved, moved to per.
Second with discussion.
Okay, we have first and a second under discussion.
All right, so this, I think, is good because it really clarifies who's doing what. And I think there was one slide, I don't remember which number it was, but where you emphasized that it's in alignment with the category A of FEMA debris collection. So as part of all this, I just think communications will be important. Explain to people, maybe now, sooner than later, before we go into hurricane season and everything, as to this is what you should, what you can do, what you can't do, because we get all that afterwards, and they've already put stuff somewhere. If something's happened, then it's too late. So my, my only suggestion, obviously, forward, moving forward, but is, how do you, you know, properly communicate that to everybody? Or I think we should. I know it's just to advertise today. That's my only, more of a comment than a question.
But, and I, and I do think a lot of this is so that when you do ask for the money, because we're doing it already, like, when you can't get to somebody, or people are locked, they're blocked in their properties, Pine Lakes, we had a bunch of that type of thing happening last storm, that you can then show that you had authority to do what you did in order to get your reimbursement.
And that's the message, too, is that we need to do it a certain way or we don't get the money.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Aye.
All right, that passes 5-0. Thank you, Megan, appreciate it. Any predictions on what's going to happen next week?
No.
Too early to say, that is my official answer.
Beautiful fall-like weather.
Well, as Commissioner Parks said, be prepared, no matter what, be prepared, right? Assume the worst. Okay, moving then ahead to Commissioners, Commissioner Parks. This is on Senate Bill 180 recommending approval and adoption of a resolution expressing support for the repeal of essentially Senate Bill 180.
Yeah, thanks Chair. So this is more follow-up discussion from the last meeting. I think I had this on the agenda last time. And then it sort of ties into your agenda item 27. So as I said last time, a couple of weeks ago, I'd go talk to our legislative delegation, and I went and talked with three of them in person about my concerns over 180. So what I was told was that they would come talk to us in person, meaning either here or individually, or in a smaller setting, with the Senate attorney. And maybe you know who this is, but Commissioner Sabatini, assuring us that what we're not doing specifically with the comp plan and LDR changes, including potentially form-based codes, would be in opposition to 180. So I'm not, I'm, I'm really kind of proposing that it just be tabled. I guess we can talk to your item as well, but to that be tabled, because I made a, I made a commitment to them, you know, that I wouldn't put the resolution forward until at least they were heard out, they were heard.
And then who, I'm sorry, who was heard out?
To Senator Trunell, Yarokowski, and Rep. Brokowski and Rep. Cobb.
I would totally, I mean, listen, we're, this is an army of people who are infuriated by this bill. And the way this thing, and I, and I get it, but at the end of the day, everyone's mobilized against it, or mobilizing. It's terrible. It was done in a very backhanded way. Typical tell has, they use the guise of hurricane areas in order to sneak it in there. Nobody was questioning it. Every single, okay, I'll just give you an example of how sneaky it was. Every single Democrat voted for this. And as you very well know. sneaky it was. Every single Democrat voted for this. And as you very well know, generally Republicans and Democrats in Tallahassee are divided on issues of growth and home rule.
Their Gneselimus test, they all agreed.
They all agreed, right? The reason why the entire Democratic Congress voted for it is nobody even knew this was in there, right? I mean, this is the number one enemy of home rule and local government. And, and it was, it was party line, it was everybody voted for it. So sneaky, it needs to be repealed. I think they'll barely modify it, maybe, but I would move forward with it. I don't know what those legislators, our local legislators are going to say that is more important than the bill sponsor, DeSigley, who everyone I know who's spoken to him. Probably, I think he's basically all but admitted that this is more burdensome. And this is the burdensome bill, right? Not, not the regulations it's trying to address. It's creating more burdens than anything else. I think, I think that he's going to probably modify. I don't think anybody in the delegation even knew what this was. I mean, they really didn't. It's, it all comes down to just a couple sentences and a 40-page bill that create all the issues, but I don't, I don't know what they're going to say. I don't predict that they're going to say anything that would affect any of the five commissioners voting to say, hey, that generally this is a bad bill, it should be repealed or modified, which, I mean, you can do what you want, but I, I feel very comfortable moving forward with it. I mean...
Is it because you wanted them to, they were going to come to a meeting and explain...
Yeah, what I, what I interpreted was that they would explain to us in person that, you know, from, with the Senate attorney, that no, it wouldn't apply to our 180. I don't, I'm not sure I necessarily believe that, because of what I've heard even since my meetings last week. Now, I've been gone for, since the meeting, most since, mostly since that meeting, so I haven't had a chance to talk to them or anything. But I, the last, where I left it last with them was, okay, I would keep this on the agenda until I heard from the Senate attorney, and they came and talked to us.
You said the attorney being the general counsel for the Senate?
Yeah, the general counsel.
Really? Interesting. Yeah, because I doubt that person even really was that.
I know, and I...
They usually do more HR issues.
No, no, I mean, I'm, as much as anybody, I, this was like a big deal, you know, for, for me, as a potential problem. So I, I'm with you.
I would move to approve respectfully, and I totally get it. I mean, I just personally, I think that this is the least we could do. In fact, the next item, I think, is more significant. But, but I would, I would definitely say anybody that says this doesn't affect LDRs and comp plan amendments is, is being a little duplicitous, because this is exactly what this is about. And of course, the Department of Commerce, as I mentioned earlier in the meeting, has already issued letters at Orange County saying, hey, like, your whole comp plan is, is wrong now because of this bill. So I don't see where they're getting that from.
Would you be willing to table it two weeks?
Sure.
Until...
If it's on the next meeting, I'm fine with that. I just don't want this to be...
I, no, I agree. So if it, if it can wait, and if I don't get the answer, my answer, or they don't, don't, they don't come and communicate, which they, I'm saying they seem to want to do that, then maybe we move forward with this.
Yeah, yeah. If it bumps the next meeting, I'll move...
I'll make a, you want to make?
No, you can make it.
I'll make a motion to table it two more weeks.
Second.
And, okay, for the purpose...
Of communicating with them, and of providing...
Them communicating to us.
Correct. I'm sorry, correct, yes.
Okay, all right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, was that an aye in favor? Right?
Yes.
Okay, all right. That was 5-0 for two weeks. All right, then that kind of, you know, begs a question. On 27, do we, I mean, my, my request was jump into the lawsuit to challenge it, but if we're going to get an explanation that somehow this is like not going to affect our actual statutory duties and affect our ability to amend the comp plan and address LDRs and so forth, then, I mean, I would suggest table this for two weeks.
Chairman, would you mind if I make a motion that we table this to coincide with Commissioner Parks?
I don't mind at all.
So I'll make a motion that we table this and to, to coincide with Commissioner Parks.
I would second that, but just brief discussion on it. I didn't get to go too far into the tab. I did some research to try to find out what the substance of the lawsuit is, because obviously I support taking a legal challenge. I mean, we all have standing, anybody could do it. And I saw that this lawsuit's gaining on distraction, but maybe our general counsel can explain. I, I don't really understand her legal argument because it hasn't really been published. Maybe that's a strategy, they're kind of hiding it. But to me, I, I don't see the advantage of that. Is, I, did you see any notes or public comments about what, what their strategy is going to be specifically legally to challenge it?
They are claiming it's unconstitutional, violates home room power. They're also talking about the retroactive nature of it. So I do have, I thought it was attached to the agenda. I don't have it printed, but I'll get you a copy of it to look at.
Yeah, I just, I mean, obviously, to some degree, I would support it. I know that they've already got dozens of cities, they got hundreds of thousands of dollars behind this lawsuit, so I just don't know how much, what, how, we would be helping by putting more money into it, because clearly they, they're really well financed. There's so many cities and counties that have already signed on. But I also, I hate to say it, I just don't feel very confident that state court judges of the persuasion that had been appointed recently are going to, are going to override this bill and declare it unconstitutional, especially our appellate courts probably won't go in that direction either. If they found a way to federally challenge it, like they've done with some other things over the years, you got a federal judge, I think you're looking at a different situation. But I, I, I just don't have a lot of confidence in it. But, you know, I, I need to wait to see what she says.
Yeah, take a look at what, what, what they put together. I mean, they've been whittling away at home rule forever, but this just seems like such a blatant violation of what is required by the Constitution or the authority that's given to local governments. So, so we'll be back on this when, in two weeks. Okay. Did we call for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye, aye, aye for.
Okay, 5-0 in favor of coinciding to Tab 26. Coming back, Tab 28, Commissioner Smith as, I recommend the appointment of Commissioner Smith as a canvassing board primary member, and Commissioner Morris as the alternate canvassing board member for the 2026 election cycle. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second for those two appointments?
Second, but it just...
Smith's primary, Morris's secondary.
Second, but I had just one question on it. Is this this year or next year? It says 26.
It's the election cycle in '26.
Oh, because there's no countywide races, only municipal this year?
Yeah, which, right.
Okay.
20, 20.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, that's 5-0. Appreciate your service in that regard. Commissioner Parks, this is the item to fill four vacant at-large positions on the public lands and trails acquisition advisory committee who experience in one or more of the following areas: biology, botany, zoology, development of recreational facilities, including trails, and/or knowledge of local history. Okay. And there, we, everyone has the narrowed-down list?
And we're looking for four appointments. Title.
I'd move to approve A.J. Rowe. I think they're all, I mean, these are all good names to me, so.
Are you, and I'm just curious, on A.J., you're, you're, you're going off of the local history part, right?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, because...
Well, he, I mean, I primarily see him at just the history events. He's at every single history event.
100%. He is a history guy, and he is a longtime resident, his family are longtime residents of Lake County. So that, there, there definitely is that, you know...
And he, and I also personally that he...
So, you know, I like A.J. A.J.'s a friend of mine. Been a friend of mine for a long time, but he's nowhere nearer as qualified as the other people on this list.
That's very straightforward.
Well, all right, so for the, for the, for the, for the history spot, right? I mean, for the local knowledge?
Local knowledge, he's all over it. But, but this is the Parks and Trails, and we have people who have local knowledge on there.
This is public lands. This is public lands and acquisition, and it does include knowledge of local history.
It does. But there's some people that are on there that have that local knowledge.
And it's, it's four people. So, I mean, we can just go through them one by one. You seem to have studied the list a little more than I have. I mean, there's a lot of names.
What, so what are the, can you, what are the categories?
I, I would say just let staff pick them. This is our recommendation.
Okay, well, since we're all, I mean, it sounds somewhat like we, we better get on the record here. All of the, the people that are from District 4 on this list, Bill Miller, Tim Kylie, and Steve Crawford have great expertise. So I, you know, they're, so if somebody said, okay, you've got three out of District 4 who have great expertise and meet these qualifications, you've got to pick one, Leslie, that's hard. That's really hard.
But they're all at large, of course. We don't really...
No, I'm just saying, though, if somebody told me you had to narrow that down, that, this is like, these are really good, they have great qualifications. Also, I know from District 5, I met with Donna Bosold the other day, great credentials. And she's in the Fruitland Park area, had moved here from Monroe County. We heard from her when we had a discussion about DFW.
I asked her, I asked her to apply. I spoke with her, and she brings a lot of knowledge in from the Monroe County area.
I just have a question. Is there any way to put, I don't know if you have it on the screen, or if you want to just repeat the three, the four categories that are open, just so we kind of generally try to maybe more...
Biology, botany?
Well, no, because I thought, I thought, I thought there was...
All we've appointed is for the five district representatives.
Yeah, but there's...
So it could be any one of the following: biology, botany, zoology, development of recreational facilities, including trails, and/or local history.
So those are individual categories of biology, botany?
They could have one or any, or more of those.
Okay. All right, because, I mean, just personally, you know, I know Steve Crawford is very well qualified.
He worked for the water authority. He was, he was a fish and wildlife, right?
Right.
Fisheries for years and years. And then he worked for the water authorities, a biologist.
Yeah, I think he has a master's, if I remember, remember from his application.
Sounds like everybody wants him, so we can put him down. And that gives us three more spots, right?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, so you kind of, by process of elimination, yeah. You know, the, so A.J. is very good. There's, there's no doubt. I mean, for local knowledge. You also have sort of in that category Rebecca Mendoza, and then...
I like Donna Bosold.
And Donna as well. But, well, she, she's not, she's new, though. She's new to the county, right? She's got great experience.
Yeah, she's a land planner. She has a lot of background in public land acquisition, all of the things that, I mean, a lot of these.
And she was in a tough area in Monroe County. Can you imagine what she had to do in Monroe County to get things through? That's, that's why I wanted her. I think she'd be very good.
Isn't Rebecca Mendoza the one that came to the Ferndale meeting when we were having that Ferndale?
I don't think she was at that meeting. What Rebecca has done, she's lived in Claremont all her life. They have a pretty decent amount of land in what's Mohawk, what used to be called Mohawk, the historical location of South Lake County near Mineola. And they, she has kept that as a historical aspect of the house and the rail station that used to be there. But then her property, she manages in cooperation through a state program. They, she voluntarily dedicated it as a, as a preserve, if you will, never to be built on. And so she, she's in cooperation with the state, but she actually manages. So she's got like hands-on management experience through the, through the private aspect, if you, if you will.
Okay, Daniel Whitehouse, another really great one.
Yeah. Yeah, and he's, right, exactly.
Has been super instrumental in following, you know, parks, trails. You know, I know from the trails aspect, that's a strong area for him. Isn't he a cyclist?
He is.
Yeah.
Yeah, and...
We just need at least one good old boy on there, that's fine, for A.J. It can't be all botanists with master's degrees. You got to have a good old boy.
I like A.J.
He is a lawyer, too, that, you know, for whatever that's worth, good or bad. But I think it does help from a standpoint...
We won't count that against him.
Well, you're, you know, when you're trying to, thank you, on behalf of A.J.
I'm, I'm okay with A.J.
It just said, you know, you're, you're taking X amount of money, you're trying to make it go as far as it can go. And creativity is going to be, I think, really important for this committee in order to get that money to go as far as it can possibly go.
I will say one more thing about A.J. People talk about conservation, the abstract, and then personal. And, and with him, he purchased a bunch of other property right around where he lives in Yalaha by the lake. And he's like, you know, different parcels, and he's trying to create some conservation of his own will. And I just think that, that it's a, it's like a personal commitment. I see the personal commitment, how important it is to him, several generations. Obviously, his children, I think, still live here. And so it's generation, generation, generation. I just think it's good to have that one person on the board who's, who looks at it that way, in a personal way. So...
I got to put a plug in for Tim Kylie. He's on the CRA board out in Surrinto, and again...
I don't know why y'all are still fighting for him. He's, we've already said he's okay, so let's go.
No, this is Tim Kylie. I just wanted to mention Tim. He's, he's a, this is a guy that comes to the meetings, has read every single thing in advance. You know, he goes the extra mile to be up to speed on everything. I think his background, I'll go look, but I think...
So who do you want to kick off? Steve Crawford, Donna Bosold, or Daniel Whitehouse?
I don't want to kick anybody off. I just want to, you know, what a good...
It's not kicking them off. It's, it's like an island. They're on the island.
I do think there's agreement on Crawford. Is that safe to say? On Steve Crawford?
The one I've seen the most consensus on is Steve Crawford. And then, to a degree, yeah, then Donna, A.J., and Tim Kylie.
Yeah, so you could do...
That's four.
Crawford, Bosold, either A.J. or Mendoza for your local, and then Daniel Whitehouse? Just putting that out there as a possibility. And I'm, A.J. or Rebecca are either, are either one is good in that spot for the local knowledge.
Based on what the board has said, my, my opinions, I think that my four would be Steve, Donna, Tim, and A.J. Those would be my four.
That's a good slate.
Got a motion?
Uh, I hope. I don't want to be forcing, I know other people have strong opinions, but I would move to approve Steve Crawford, Donna Bosold, Tim Kylie, and A.J. Rowe.
So I would go with Steve Crawford, Donna Bosold, A.J. Rowe, and Daniel. No, I'm just, just, Tim is fine.
Okay. I mean, yeah.
So that's a second?
Well...
If that's a second, then...
Yeah, you can't do them individually, because I was thinking...
Second.
I think we at least have a motion on the table. We can keep...
I'm happy to amend it.
Do them individually.
All right, hold on. Hold on, I get...
We can do it individually if you guys want.
Can we clarify the current motion, just to make sure?
Yes, ma'am. It's Steve Crawford, Donna Bosold, Tim Kylie, A.J. Rowe.
And I think that, you know, Daniel would be great, but I also think that Tim and Daniel will bring very similar things to the table. So...
I, I can tell you there's not a bad candidate on here.
There isn't. And a lot of people that aren't on this shortlist are great candidates, too. So I mean, we just had a really, really good group.
Yeah, I think some, they'll still come to the meetings and hear out and maybe help in some other capacity, but they just want the final vote on the advisory board. I'm comfortable with that. Does anybody want to see one removed and one added from that list?
I was just going to, I was just proposing Daniel Whitehouse. Maybe that's the Tim, in the Tim Kylie spot.
Who would you kick off the island, the island person?
There you go. You have to, you have to...
I don't want to be put into that, but, Tim, I guess it would be the Tim Kylie spot, but...
I'm, I'm trying to find...
I'm fine with, that's what you want to do. That puts three lawyers on the board, though. A.J., Gavin, and, and Daniel. You don't want it to be too many lawyers.
Oh, Daniel's a lawyer?
Yes.
Oh, boy, you're really good. Yeah, that's, there ought to be like a limitation.
Yeah, you can't...
You should have put that in the ordinance, no more.
Well, you do bring it. That is a compelling argument against attorneys.
And what's Tim's profession, yeah?
Okay, I, that's what I'm trying, I don't know why I cannot pull that off.
Does anybody know a fan?
No, I thought he's an architect. He's a, shoot. Right, hold on.
Is it in here in the packet?
It is.
I got somebody coming. Over.
Angela, I think we are trying to figure out what Tim Kylie's profession is.
Angela, I think we are trying to figure out what Tim Kylie's profession is.
So Tim Kylie was actually, Angela Harold, Operations Director of Parks and Trails Facilities and all the things. That he was actually an additional candidate that came in after we redid the ordinance, so he is in the back, the backup packet that was.
Oh, he's not in here, because that's why.
He's not in the booklet, because he came in after we did the booklet, but we can.
Do you have that included?
It is in the agenda packet. I can.
It's in the agenda packet. Okay, I can't pull up my iPad. It's in the agenda packet. Can somebody pull it up in, oh, you can't.
Thank you. I'm working on it.
I don't know if you have it in that big.
I'm fine, I'm fine with either Daniel or Tim.
I think it's really important to hear, so we can compare real quick. I'll quit looking, because I know it's not in here.
No, we updated everything after the change of the ordinance.
Yeah, it should be in, it could be in yours.
Which one you want?
Tim Kylie. Kylie. Thank you. All right, Tim Kylie. Civil engineering, AutoCAD certified, Lake Tech, Santa Fe College, Gainesville, University of South Florida, Sarasota Campus. BA in finance and marketing. Um, he is a
Real estate agent.
He's a real estate agent. Um, explain your vision.
As bad as realtors, right? I'm just, I'm just kidding.
I don't know any of the realtors we've appointed so far, so.
I know, it's not a bad person.
Gotta have one.
But. It's really hard to read the binding.
This is in, this is in the digital, in the book? It's in the book?
It's in, yeah. Uh, in your, not in the binder, in the agenda packet.
Yeah, all right.
We had extended the due date, so these were, he was an additional.
What's his age?
Oh, yeah, we don't want to be too, we don't want to go to the protecting categories.
I'm gonna guess that he's thirty-eight.
Okay, explain your vision for public lands. Would you like me to read that out to everybody? His vision for public lands and trails. The Dorotav Trail, rail to trail is going to be, or has the potential to be a main artery for Eastlake County and interconnect our communities and neighborhoods. Planning for locations that offer accommodations, for example, restrooms and eateries, I think is essential, ex- essential for it to get to its full potential. Lake County has an opportunity to do it right, having a corridor available to provide a trail and path that interconnects the Golden Triangle. It is a unique opportunity that other towns and municipalities would love to have. I hope to be a part of the greater vision to make this a cornerstone of the county.
Okay, can you pull, can someone pull up Daniel Whitehouse?
Yep. Daniel Whitehouse has a BS in computer science, an MBA, and a Juris Doctor. He is with Strategic Solutions Legal Law Firm. Um, his, explain your vision. He said, "My hobbies often compel me to serve in ways that can help make a difference for our community, and the Public Lands Initiative is a perfect, perfect example of that. I recently heard Commissioner Smith, they say that if the county is going to acquire property, he believes that property should be useful to the county's residents. I couldn't agree more with that sentiment and want to do my part to help see that vision to fruition. Our county's commitment to connecting and growing trails is rooted in the understanding that trails increase the value to our community and in turn make Lake County an attractive place to live, work, and play. As an avid user of our parks and trails, I see a myriad uses of our parks and trails, including those who use trails to travel to and from work. I see youth sporting groups learning to work together as teams and gaining the competitive spirit. I see the tourism of our, our county generates by drawing participants from across the country. By enhancing our public lands, we are enhancing the attractiveness of our existing residents and many future visitors." So they both seem to have a passion for trails and interconnectivity.
Yeah, see, that was my only, um, I guess, difference than what everybody else was talking about, was Crawford, I had Crawford, Bosold, at, at least at this point in the meeting. Crawford, um, Bos- Bosold, Donna, AJ, and Daniel. Whitehouse.
I'm fine with that, because I think they're all good, and AJ is my preference, so that list is also fine as an alternate motion.
And who made the motion?
Sean. So if you wanted to restate it, I'll second it. Say it again, if you don't mind.
Well, we had to know, you would have to amend your motion. We have a motion in a second on the floor.
Oh, so I moved to amend my own motion to replace it with these four names. What were the names, Sean?
Crawford, Bosold, AJ, and Whitehouse.
I'll second that.
All right.
Well, I, I had the second, but the second agrees.
Okay.
Okay.
But the first is.
Seems like that's four votes right there, so.
All right.
Was there anything else we wanted to change, or no?
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, that, that passes. We have filled the committee. Um, we have excellent participants, and Commissioner Parks is liaison, so you have your word cut out for you.
Fun begins.
Yeah.
Yep. I appreciate that. Thank you.
So I guess you will work with the county manager and the county attorney and determine next steps as far as
Right, we'll.
what your committee's gonna take on.
We'll start establishing the meetings and start coming up with criteria.
Okay. All right, um, moving on then to reports. County attorney, county manager.
Nothing today.
Commissioner Sabatini.
I always remember something right after I say nothing, so let me just, give me one second. I'm trying to think if there's anything this week that I wanted to make mention of. Nope, nothing, sorry. I just, I, I do it every time, so.
Commissioner Parks.
All right, two things. Um, so one, if Kathleen, you could just put up the Wellness Way website. I'm not sure that, you, you may know about this already, maybe not, I'm not sure, but this is officially live, correct? So it's up, and it had some input from the public, as well as stakeholders, in shaping the look and feel of this website. Um, it will change over time, but it is, it is something that you can now direct people towards. It has some information even about, like, you, do you want to, I don't know if you want to go through it real quick, but it's just that you can see the tabs. It does have obviously the obvious maps, what we're trying to focus on. Um, it does see the industrial, industrial side of it as well, those areas. Um, it does have questions about MSTU that are answered there. I think that's an actual tab, correct?
It has an FAQ.
FAQ, frequently asked questions. Okay. So I, I just wanted to say thank you for putting it together, uh, and it, it, certainly, it's not just me. I mean, if y'all have any input on it and want to add to it or change something, by all means, it is, it will be changed from time to time, as these kinds of things do. And you see our, our lead now is, uh, working with Kathleen, uh, on a regular basis to start looking for those sites for economic development. Just wanted to point that out.
Let's see, I was gonna ask, has everybody had a chance to kind of see, too, what's happening with, I mean, I know you're 100% up to speed on the Lake Orange connector, and, um, and then the Sawgrass Boulevard, what's going on? Sawgrass Bay Boulevard, um, just as far as, you know, issues that are having to get worked out with Orange County and some of the timing there. But it appears to me that when those road issues get worked out, that will play a big part in some of the commercial type activity coming onboard.
Absolutely. You know, that road and the 516, of course, when that intersection's done, so. So I just wanted to point that out, and then number two, since it's come up at the last couple of meetings about, uh, the need for communications, particularly around, I think the last meeting was BMAP, Basin, Basin Management Action Plan, and, you know, what's, uh, we gotta do a lot more education on that, I think was the comment that I heard, that even in particular about some of what we're trying to, the culture, if you will, that we're, the real Florida real close that we're promoting. Um, I know communications is stretched right now. Um, they are stretched. So what I'm proposing is, is that, and I know Commissioner Smith has done board shorts for a while, um, but I think in light of the resources that we have, not necessarily that we stop doing that, but I think we need to focus on doing some more presentations, more productions, three-minute video clips, if you will, to start educating people on the Basin Management Action Plan. Fertilizer ordinance, we had done that for a while. I haven't seen that come up recently. It's only so much you can do. I know you're limited, but I just think in, in that particular time, I think we need to, in this particular time, I think we need to, um, sort of focus on that, so. I do like the commissioner reports individually. I think those are important that we do on a periodic basis, but I think just from a standpoint, that's just my opinion of what we need to do moving forward.
Okay. More discussion or just food for thought?
No, just, just food for thought, yeah, I mean, because I, and they're, they're, you know, they, they'll need direction on that. The staff would need direction on that, but. And may, maybe there's nothing to talk about right now, but.
No, I think we discussed that the last time that we would be working on PSAs, when I think we were talking about it within conjunction with the distributed waste, that we would start working on some PSA, so I'll work with communications on that.
Yeah, and again, my concern is that, I mean, I know that, you know, you, you do the, the board shorts, and they're, they're good, but it's just a matter of how much you can put out there and how much they can do with resources, and if we're gonna really take this head on, you know, um, there's a lot of information to get out there, uh, what, what, it's basically a matter of time and what resources they can do, so.
Yeah, I'm sure my board shorts would not interfere with any PSA. I was talking about horses and goats and llamas.
No, I understand, and that's good. I mean, I think some of that, there's a role with the, with the chambers, you know, can do things like that, but I mean, it's a matter of time and, uh, resources, so that, you know, what they have to do.
I can't, sorry, I got, I kind of lost this, lost picture of this whole thing, because I zoomed out for a minute, I'm sorry. So we're making like a social media policy? Is that what's going on?
No, no social media policy. No, this is just, uh, direction on where we go with communications, being that they have limited resources.
Why they more communication, the better. I think all five commissioners, if they want to do fifty videos a week, they should, and I think we should budget for that, because I don't think commissioners have their voices heard enough on issues. I think if you had, a- ask the average person like counting, what do you, what's this commissioner thing? Most people don't know, so I think utilizing to the maximum degree as much of our communication apparatus we possibly can on behalf of all five commissioners individually is, is, I totally support that. I wouldn't want to reel it in or limit it in any way, uh, you know, I mean, no matter who's the chair or the vice chair or just one member, I think, I think everyone benefits when people know where the commissioners stand on different.
No, I totally agree. I'm, I'm not saying that the commissioner reports, that, that I think you do as many as you want. I totally agree with you actually on that. If Jennifer thinks that they can keep doing board shorts and then do all, everything that we talked about at the last two meetings with BMAP, you know, uh, like a real series on that, like dedicated, not month in, month out, but pretty regular on some of these things, then, then if you, she says she can do it, you can do it, but.
Well, maybe we need to alter the budgets, budget season, but I, I, I totally support all, any commissioner wants to spend more of their own time in front of the camera trying to, you know, highlight certain things. I wish I had more time to do it, so, you know, obviously, I wouldn't support limiting that in any way, because I just don't think the, the community sees enough of their commissioners. They really don't even, most people don't even know who the commissioners are, let's be real.
And then on these particular issues where we wish people had more information and awareness, um, there's so many opportunities that I think that we, we are missing, and so I, I'm in favor of more resources in that regard.
Yeah.
But I don't really know exactly what the, you know, what the ask
Yeah.
is.
No, I mean, I think the, the ask is, you know, can, can you do that? Can you, now that we've talked about educating on BMAPs, that was the la, that was one of the last big issues, or if it's about, if whatever is passed in a landscape code, or wha, another issue, you know, do you, do you have the resources to be able to do that and continue to do board shorts and then all of our reports? And if you're good with that, then, then great, but.
So if we don't have the resources and the board wants to continue to do everything, I am happy to go out and secure a contract to bring in additional resources, if not additional staffing. I'm happy to do whatever the board needs.
Well, look, we, we created that position for the Water Authority for like a social media person, but, I mean, sorry, I hate to be super anecdotal, but I, I mean, I don't know what they're doing. I don't see many, Lake County Water Authority's social media at all. I don't see videos, I don't see anything. Maybe just pull that back out of there and put it in here and have them just do, um, comp plan stuff and amendments and BMAPs and, and native plants and like, just pull them.
They're paying for that, though.
Okay.
They're, they were.
Yeah, it's part of their budget.
They, they did request that position.
Yeah, but that, that could actually, that could actually fall in.
Water Authority, and they're paying for the position.
Under some of the same subject matter.
Commissioner Parks actually wants to do.
Maybe you could team up on some of this subject matter.
Utilize that communications over there for the BMAPs and all that, because that's all water quality.
It is.
That falls right in line with the Lake County Water Authority.
I could, yes, we can work, work on that.
Yeah, again, I hate to be anecdotal, but like, we created a whole position, and I just like, don't see that much Water Authority and stuff. I don't, in fact, to be honest, I've seen almost nothing, so. I just feel like if, you know, you put somebody in charge, it's a full-time job, like, they're gonna make the Water Authority all over Facebook, Twitter, this, that, community, you know, really aggressively pushing it. Chamber of Commerce meetings, this, I'm just not seeing that at all.
The pitch, the position, I don't think has been filled yet. It was just approved in April. It was just approved in April. I don't think that we filled it yet, have we?
We, we have not filled the position yet.
What's the salary? Just curious. I'm not trying to sharpshet you yet. If you don't know, it's fine.
Yeah, off the top of my head.
Okay, it's fine.
I believe it's around forty-five, but, uh, the, as far as the Water Authority graphics and things, we're doing design for them already. Uh, we're expanding on that and hope to, once we can fill that position. Uh, we're also looking at the social media side of things. We have gotten control over that old Facebook page to begin doing that, and right now we're working on a comps plan, just to make sure that we're aligned and, and really forwarding the Water Authority, Water Authority's objectives.
I think the position was just approved in April, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so it's out and it's posted. We just haven't filled it yet. That would explain why you haven't seen the impacts of it. Okay.
Yeah, and I'm, again, so I, I just wanted to make sure, because to do a serious campaign, year in and year out, for instance, I'm just bring, keep bringing this one up, because it's the last one, BMAPs. It sounded like people didn't know what that was or how it applies. That's not like, uh, not to be picky here, but you can't, you can't just do like one and then maybe six months later, another one, or not even. It's a regular campaign, and so I was just thinking, do you have the resources for video clips? I mean, there's a lot of production that goes into that, um, and if there's gonna be more issues that'll come up besides the BMPs, uh, BMAPs, I'm sorry, then that's my question, and versus the situation we're in now.
And, and that's something that we're looking at, uh, at, as the board knows, we're in the process of the, uh, communications planning. Ensuring that alignment and looking at all of our key messages and things that we have to kind of reinforce. We'll have more insight as we continue with that research, but if it's the will of the board, if there's something that you would like to see that I can evaluate as part of that with the video, um, and, and the resources available, that's definitely something we can look into.
Yeah, and that's, that's, so it, it would be more than currently what we're doing?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, that's my, that's the question, so.
Okay, all right. Any more on your report?
Um, no, that's it.
Okay.
Thanks.
Commissioner Smith?
I'm good right now.
Yes? All right, you're good?
So far.
Okay. Commissioner Morris?
Uh, thank you for allowing me to, uh, sit here in the keys and vote. I appreciate it.
Did you say you were in a boat? No, I'm just kidding. Okay.
I could have been, but I'm waiting on the meeting to be over. The boat's ready to go.
All right. Well, thank, thank you for participating. This was an important meeting to have everybody, uh, voting and involved and participating. Okay, all right, any, anything else to add on your report? Okay, speaking of boats, yes, Sunday, I went to Silver Glen, and I was able to go out with Marine Patrol and actually be at Silver Glen Run and see what's going on out there. I've been reading a lot of social media posts. I've been hearing a lot. a lot. Anyway, we're hoping soon to, once we were working with the sheriff and his team, and, and we're gonna hopefully soon have something to bring back for everyone to take a look at. So it's a, it's a, there's a real problem, and I think we've got a solution. It's gonna take a lot of effort on the part of the Marine Patrol, but I think that there, one of, one of the keys here is trying to have Marion County have the same ordinance, but we're looking to the sheriff to work on that part of it, and his team, so we'll, we'll have something soon. We'll be looking at the sandbar as well, trying to figure out exactly how do you describe the sandbar? I mean, I know you, there are probably a lot of ways to describe it, but how do you put a legal description on its location? So how-
It's hard to describe the impact that it has on the residents that are there.
Oh, yeah, I, I have heard a lot about that.
And I've sat in their living rooms many times.
Yeah, so you, I mean, you can hear it on land, you can hear it, it's, it's impacting a lot of people. So that will be coming back, too, for everyone to consider. Let's see, tomorrow, I'm gonna be at the Lake 100 doing a presentation with the Homeless Mitigation Advisory Committee. That, the Lake 100 was gracious enough to let us use their umbrella to have this advisory committee, so we wouldn't have to try to do this, you know, as, as a county committee, per se, but our goal is to present information to the business community, not just the Lake 100, but at this particular event, Lake 100 members, looking for ways to partner with the private sector to address housing needs and, you know, everything from participation, volunteerism, supporting organizations that are doing great work out there, and there's just a lot of great information. But it's, 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 it's pretty amazing and sad that we have probably around, anywhere from twenty-four hundred to three thousand people in Lake County who are homeless, about, if I remember the statistics correctly, about seven hundred that are living in places that are not fit for, for human habitation. The rest of that number would be children and families that are literally moving from, you know, friends and neighbors, cars, camping, whatever they can come up with as a way to, you know, have a place to, to live and stay, and these are kids that are going to our schools. So what we want to highlight are the, the groups that are out there, that are doing great work, and where we have gaps and how together, as the public and private sector, we can try to help cut that number down. And I think that those are the key things I wanted to tell you about. At the next meeting, I'm gonna try to make an agenda item on the Waqiva-Calla Greenway, and a request that we had to assist with sending letters out to property owners in that area, and I think this could really dovetail nicely with the Public Lands Acquisition Committee, because there are state dollars to purchase lands or conservation easements in that Waqiva-Calla Greenway, and, and the, we were asked by the Friends of Waqiva to team up on a, like, letterhead or a joint letter just to, you know, give credibility to the fact that there, you know, there are public dollars, it wouldn't be county dollars, but, but these dollars are available, and would you consider selling your property, and if so, or selling a conservation easement, here's who you need to contact, or if they reach out to you, you know, we're very supportive. So I'd like to bring that back and to see if we can get the board, you know, blessing on that. And that's it for my report, so I'll send it over to Commissioner Smith.
So it's quite amazing that today that our library mentioned that we had a request for DVDs, because-
What's a DVD?
It's a digital video device.
He's not gonna know what you're gonna say next.
So, but anyway, the reason why that's important is if you go back a couple more generations, that's the national day today. Today is National Vinyl Record Day. That's all I have.
Awesome.
All right, very cool. All right, well, thank you, everyone. Great meeting, and we stand adjourned.